Call to order for the April 7, 2021 Dunellen City Council Workshop. Would you please rise for the pledging of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of America, a free, honest, sovereign nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Remain standing, please. Is there someone in the audience that would like to come up and give a short blessing? Pastor Tom, thank you very much.
Let us pray. Father God, in the name of Jesus, we thank you for your goodness, your grace, and your mercy. We thank you, Lord, for all that you are doing here in Dunellen, seen and unseen. And Father, in Jesus' name, I pray your blessing over this meeting this evening. For those who are in these positions of authority, I pray, Lord, that you knit their hearts together to be in one accord, Lord, that you would bless them with an extra measure of knowledge, wisdom, and discernment. And for the city as a whole, we claim it for the Kingdom of God. In Jesus' name, amen.
Okay. Please be seated. Ms. Roberts, can you please have roll call, please?
Mayor White.
Present.
Vice Mayor Hanchard.
Present.
Councilwoman Williams.
Here.
Councilwoman Kenny.
Here.
Councilwoman Cabbage.
Present.
Dan Smith, Finance Department.
Here.
Chief McCray.
Here.
Troy Slavery, Hubert Works.
Here.
Julie Donowski, Clerk's Department.
Here.
Andrew Hand, City Attorney.
Here.
And we also have Alan Gary from Kimley Horn with us this evening. The agenda for this meeting was posted on the city's website, a City Hall Bulletin Board on Wednesday, March 31, 2021.
Thank you very much. So before we start the meeting, let's just go over a few of the ground rules so everybody knows the do's and the don'ts. Those of you in the audience that would like to speak, hopefully you have signed up. If you have signed up, you will be chosen first. If you haven't signed up and you decide during that allotted time that you still would like to speak, we will invite you up to speak. Our intent is not to exclude but to include. You'll have three minutes to speak. Please, at this time, if you have any devices that may ring or interrupt, please turn them off. And keep in mind that when you come to the podium to speak, this is a council workshop, council meeting. It's a governmental meeting. We're here trying to do constructive things. We are open to positive suggestions. We are open to criticisms of how we can do things better. But what we are not open to is any personal insults, attacks, that the intent is to embarrass or to defame any member of council or a member of staff. A reminder to council that we do have an obligation to run timely meetings. We have to find a balance between allowing plenty of discussion, but at the same time, knowing that we have to move on. We have agenda items, and it's only fair to the other council members and our audience to move our meetings along. So with that said, we will be following the Roberts Rules of Order, which means that if you want to speak, please be recognized by council. Once you have spoken, you cannot speak a second time until every other council person has had the opportunity to speak. Then you will be given a second opportunity to speak if you would like. At that point, Chair will be looking to move the agenda forward. If council disagrees with Chair and wants to continue discussion, a majority vote overrules the Chair. One last thing is, we are recording these meetings, and they are being sent Zoom. We have people that are watching this on Zoom. And the one thing that I hear from them is oftentimes when speakers are speaking, or even when council members are speaking, we don't speak directly into the microphone, and they have trouble hearing what's being said. And we also want to do closed caption on these meetings, and it's important that you can hear what's being said so you can do the closed caption properly. So please speak up, pull the microphone as close as you can to yourself. If it needs to be adjusted, please ask, and someone in the building will adjust that. So with nothing further to say on that, we're going to go to Agenda Item Number One. This is the public speaking part of the workshop, where anyone who would like to speak on any item, this was put into place, as you know, for people that cannot stay for the entire meeting, but they want to speak. So this gives you an opportunity to speak. So Ms. Roberts, at this time, do we have anybody signed up for public speaking?
Bill Bitter.
Mr. Bitter. Welcome, sir.
A couple of things. The first thing I want to do is, last Wednesday, we had a
Your name and address.
Name and address.
William Bitter, 9552 Southwest 192nd Court Road, Dunellen. Before I start, I wanted to recognize the project that we did last Wednesday on the Run Trail. We've been working on exhibits for about a year. And we worked with Troy, who was magnificent with his crew, with Matt, just did a great job. We had four different agencies, actually five. We had Rainbow River Conservation. We had the City of Dunellen. We had the Office of Greenways and Trails. And we had Marion County all working together. And if you looked at the crew, you would have thought it was one group. And the mayor came and helped us, and needed to stop by. Although I don't think, I tried to hand you a shovel, but I don't think you took the shovel. We had a pretty good time mixing cement, putting in benches. And we put in two wayside exhibits to begin and tell the story, the historical stories of Dunellen, which is the story of Boomtown, the discovery of heart rock loss fade in 1899 in Loud Springs, and also the story of railroads and exhibits called Railroad Junction. So we've been working on this. Just Paul, myself, and another volunteer put these together. So there was no fabrication cost. Paul did a grant with Duke Energy. And Dorothy Peru from Duke Energy came and visited with us. So it was a real good time all around. And I think we've made a major addition to our trail, which we'll continue to do, working with Mickey Thomas. And I actually came and worked. I teased him a little bit. I said, we've gone back to our beginning. Because Mickey, who was, you know, was an administrator, but he was out there dragging benches and mixing cement and working with the rest of us. But thanks especially to Troy, who expedited the project, got all of his equipment together with his short staff, and really made a difference in the project. We did three exhibits in two hours. It was truly amazing. So it was fun for all this to work. And thanks, Troy. You did a great job. The other thing, I want to take you back to 2008, when we did the management plan for Blue Run at Dunellen Park. And one of the requirements in the management plan, and you've probably heard me talk about this before, is we were to produce a list of rules and regulations for Blue Run Park, which we did. We put it in the management plan. It was approved by FCT. It was approved by the Dunellen Council. It was approved by Marion County. And we actually made signs up, which I was asked to do. Here's one of them. This is posted at both Trailheads and Blue Run Park. And these are basic, everyday rules that you would find in almost any park, anywhere in the country. Park hours, alcoholic beverages are prohibited, fires are prohibited, overnight camping, and so on. So what we haven't had a chance to do, which we had one year to do it, that was 12 years ago, is to put this in the form of an ordinance, so that if the police came to write a summons for some reason, they caught somebody vandalizing or breaking one of the other rules, you could actually write a summons. So I think, I thought, it was a pretty simple thing to transform this resolution that was passed by council and turn it into an ordinance that we can actually enforce. With regard to this thing, there's only two issues on here that might in some way be controversial. One is, I had asked the council to include the term of soundscape, which I wasn't here that night, and they didn't know what it was. In all the National Parks Service management plans now, there's a requirement for including soundscape. And what does that mean? That means you can't play it on radio. You can't have a helicopter over top of a park and make noise that would disturb visitors. So that's something I would put in there, one more thing. And the commercial use, and I'm out of time. The council substituted some language in this that says, "Commercial use is prohibited except for drop-off and pickup by licensed city business. Tax received too for kayak companies." My suggestion would be to simply take the language right out of the law and eat and put that in there. All the non-governmental commercial use is prohibited. If the city wants to approve use of the park and make it governmental use, you can do that, as long as it's under government management, then it's legal. But if it's not governmental, then it's not. So I would put that in there. There was some other word that you might decide you want to put in. But let's get this up and have a right sign there so that we could write the summonses if they need to be done. It's been 2008. Time to get it done.
Thank you very much. Anyone else? Ms. Roberts?
I don't have anyone else signed up.
Okay. Is there anyone in the audience that didn't sign up that would now like to speak? Okay. Ms. Jones, thank you.
Susan Jones, 9129 Southwest 190th Avenue Road in Dunellen. I appreciate having a few minutes this evening to talk.
Sorry.
Okay. Thought I triggered something.
There we go.
Excellent. Well, many of our visitors to our fair city actually access information about Dunellen virtually before they physically come here. I would like to talk about how important it is we put our best foot forward and to the public via our website. There are several points on which we're falling short. It's not a terrible website, but it certainly could be better. The two areas where there are opportunities for improvement are accessibility and then content and accuracy. There are search functionalities that can be improved. We shouldn't have to go through multiple clicks in order to get to information that's desired. A calendar of meetings would be useful rather than having to search agendas to find out when a meeting starts, something I did just an hour ago. ADA accessibility is a huge issue. I believe the councils heard about this, and prior councils anyway have heard about this. And it's not inexpensive, but we have legal obligations to be ADA compliant and to be sure historical documents can be accessed, as well as our city ordinances and our staff. We don't have the names of our city employees out there or how to reach them. We could incorporate a feature to resize the screens for access on PDAs and cellphones, because we know that's how most people are accessing the website. They're walking around with a phone that allows them to do that. But if the screens aren't sized correctly, it can be very burdensome. Simply making sure that the information desired is presented in an easy format. But there's also opportunities to sell our city in terms of adding videos and photographs of all the parks and the recreational opportunities that are here, our historic district. There's also issues with content and accuracy. Many city ordinances cannot be accessed via the website. Interactive maps of the city streets, the library, the post office, municipal buildings would be an improvement, including a city holiday schedule, deleting things like the child identification program that we haven't had for 10 years in Dunellen, eliminating a bias for any commercial business. And a very brief look at the city website, I found that only one, if you go to animals, say you have an animal problem, there's only one local vet listed. Now, at the time the website was created, it may have only been one local vet, but we have quite a few now. And I think that's an unfair commercial advantage to that particular business, unless they have some sort of contract with the city that gives them preferential treatment. And I think instructions on how to file a complaint for code violations on business and residential properties would be very helpful. I, in closing, have listed in the document, you have two potential vendors that could be contacted for additional support, as well as the League of Cities, which may be helpful in terms of providing resources. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Is there anyone else that would like to speak? All right. Thank you very much. We will go to Agenda Item Number Two, Dunellen Chamber and Business Association Report. Julie?
Hi, I'm Julie Mancini with the Dunellen Chamber and Business Association. Our update for April 2021, we have several new members: Duke Energy, Integrity Keepers, Kelly &amp; Sons Flooring, Walmart, Roofing and Reconstruction Contractors of America, Travel Connections, and Paradise Air Plants. Chamber volunteers, Mary Jo and Vicki recently came in, again, to help us since we have been so busy getting ready for Boomtown Days. And all of the other volunteers have been working extra shifts also. We are still in need of some help on the day of Boomtown Days as well, which is this Saturday. We would welcome some high school students who are looking for volunteer hours. As far as our office, we are in need of some office volunteers to work three-hour shifts, either 9 to 12 or 12 to 3, and the days are somewhat flexible. Boomtown Days. In the past several weeks, several of us have been visiting other events to see how things are being done safely. We took cues from several other events to make ours as safe as it can be. Most of the things we will have, wait, no, so, sorry. Some of the things we will have are hand sanitizer stations placed throughout the event, and signs hung at every vendor tent suggesting masks and other safety measures. We have about half of the normal amount of vendors spread out in our venue space. With the exception of the reduced number of venues, the other traditions of Boomtown Days are still happening. These include a car show from 9 to 1 on Pennsylvania Avenue between Highway 41 and Ohio Street, pageants from, I have 11 to 3:30, but I think it's 10:45 to 3:30 in the parking area of H. Michael Evans, PA, a Kid Zone hosted by Riverlife Church over by Rainbow Springs Art of Dunellen, Kid Carson's Wild West Shows at 10, 12, 2, and 4 at the Lions Club parking lot, a pie eating contest hosted by the front porch at 1:00 PM on the lawn of Crazy Chicks, and music down by the Cedar Street Boutique, Jake White at 11, Route 41 at 1, and Keith Kate and Blues Band at 3. We have had more different people step up and take over whole parts of the event. And for that, we are so very thankful to Jeff Buchko, Keith Carson, Kelly Michael, Riverlife Church, Rainbow Springs Pageants, Mary Lynn Welch, Michelle Northsee, Joanne Black, Danny Hart, and so many others. When it came to event sponsorship, we did have some of our regulars, but again, we had more different businesses step up to sponsor, and for that, we are also so very thankful. Many of our expenses went up dramatically as a result of COVID, including insurance, which almost tripled, and the other types of things such as disposal and porta-potties went up a lot as well. We are still looking for contestants for the pie eating contest. The entry fee is $10, and there's a $200 cash prize for the winner. We will be selling Boomtown mustache shirts and face masks. Shirts are $15, and face masks are $7. They should be in tomorrow, and we will sell them ahead of time if anybody wants to get one to wear on the day of Boomtown Days. Other things coming up related to Boomtown Days, Friday morning at 7:30, the Queen contestants will have a pancake breakfast at the front porch, back porch area. Friday evening from 5 to 9, the Greater Dunellen Historical Society will host an eating and entertainment event, the Whistle Stop Cafe. Dinner items are $5, desserts are $2, and will be offered from 5 to 8. Entertainment is music by Jake White from 7 to 9. In the research we have done in the planning of Boomtown Days 2021, we discovered that soon we will be celebrating our 50th Boomtown Days. Other things, April 13 at 6 is our next Chamber Board meeting. April 22 to the 24th, the Vietnam Traveling Wall will be coming to Crystal River Harley-Davidson. Many of our local veterans are involved in this event. May 25 at 5:30, we will host our next networking dinner mixer at River Run. Last Friday, April 2, we held a ribbon cutting at the A-Team Women's Fitness. They are now located at 2780 North Florida Avenue in Hernando. And on March 23, we held our first post-COVID networking dinner mixer at the back porch at the front porch. Thirty-five members, many of whom were new to the chamber, attended. And I did email this to Mandy a few minutes before I got here today, so all of you on the council should be getting a copy of that emailed to you at some point. If you have any questions, I am open for questions at this time.
Just a comment, AIU $10. And I will be out there at 7:30 in the morning, or 7, I don't know what time, helping and putting up our tents. But if you need me, text me. And please know that we'll go running however we can.
Thank you, Valerie. For those of you that don't know, Valerie will be a contestant in the pie eating contest. This is not her first go-round at the pie eating contest either.
I think I was cheated last time. I'm just saying.
Anything else? Okay. Thank you.
Thank you, Julie. It's quite amazing when we listen to you speak how many activities are packed in from month to month. It really is nonstop activities, which is great. All right, we go to Item Number Three, Board Reports. Do we have any board reports?
I have a board report.
Oh, great. We usually
From Southwest Florida Water Management District. It is Protect Florida Springs Month. And I took note that Wikiwachi Springs, in cooperation with Southwest Florida Water Management District, put up a website that's titled, "How Visitors Can Protect Wikiwachi Springs." And it's not a very complicated site, but whoever worked on it did a great job. If somebody Googles Wikiwachi Springs, they're going to hit that site. And right away, they're going to become aware of the problems that visitors can cause if they don't practice certain habits. I think we should do the same thing for our Rainbow Springs River. And I have a contact, actually, of the person at Southwest Florida Water Management District who worked with Wikiwachi Protection Group and set up their little website. So maybe I can get together with Rainbow River Conservation, because you certainly have the photographs on the water, on the water, and so on, and tips for visitors to help keep our environment in and around the Rainbow River, a good place for everybody. Thank you.
Hey, anyone else?
Delayed. I'm in court later. No, okay. Then I'll go ahead and do, if you don't mind, then just kind of as an update for everybody regarding TPO Board. Rob did come over here, Rob Balms, who is the administrator from over there. He came over and met with Troy, Mandy, and myself yesterday, had about an hour meeting. You know, they were coming over, he was coming over to ask about priorities for the city and kind of tell us what was going on as well regarding, like, you know, the widening of the road from Walmart on is in 2024, I believe, is when that should be finished by 206, 2030. But anyway, our main thing, though, that we spoke to him about was the multimodal bike path. We still told him that that is still a priority for our city, that we are looking for any help that we can get. And he is going to be, he brought over the application that we needed to send back in. He's making some changes to it, some updates. We added some information. Y'all received the information about where we are already in the funding that City of Dunellen has already done through our CRA. We are ahead of schedule for that. We are going to be putting in how we've already gone ahead and done the off-road parking, because we will be losing that on the road, and how the city has already taken care of those issues that were a concern. And so we will be getting that probably back, hopefully, the end of today. Did you get it back? Oh, okay, we got it back today. So, anyway, so now we'll, now the staff will kind of go through it and add in the pieces that they needed to add into it as well. He's also going to be facilitating with our staff a meeting with Elton, the assistant engineer over at the county, because that is who has to do the management of this project. So Elton is kind of, he's aware of it. And so we are going to be in communications with them, trying to set up a meeting ASAP and getting that back over here, that we can get it to everyone, that we can get it done, because we need to put it on the priority list, on the TPO, and that's why I was involved, for the June meeting. So be looking for more information on that from us. But it was a good, positive meeting. We told him some of the projects that we're doing. And also, we were looking at, still thinking about the switching of roads from us taking over Pennsylvania and then the county taking back over Powell Road as an option to do a truck route that way instead of having them go through our historic district. So, and again, we kind of looked at, and then we looked at doing, how can we as a city help our mother county, Marion, to welcome people when they first come into the city? And we talked to him also that we'd still like to go forward with looking into doing, I call them pavers, but it's just painting over Troy, the stamping. Thank you. That was the word I was going for. Like, maybe right here, where we're going to be doing, and Troy will discuss this further, the new crosswalk. And then, of course, over there at Pennsylvania Avenue, we discussed that, kind of making it a welcoming area. And then also, we discussed doing a, as we discussed the other day when Troy was here, how hard it is to get in and out on East Pennsylvania Avenue. We discussed doing a red light or at least a traffic stop or a flashing light or something over there by Sun Trust, that people can get in and out of those roads and go, you know, without having to go down and come back around. And again, that would be another good place, as Troy said, to do another crosswalk and do a stamping there and a welcoming of Marion County. So Levy Citrus and Marion County would all see how great we look, no matter which way they're coming into town. So those are some of the priorities that we discussed with them. And I will keep you posted.
Good report. I think the question a lot of people would have for you, Valerie, because you have expertise in this.
Well, let's not go there.
Is, if this is really going to happen, and we're hopeful it is, it sounds like it is, when would you think it might happen? One year down the line, two years down the line, three years down the line?
Four years down the line, five years down the line.
No one knows.
Whenever FDOT decides, or with the funding, again, I think this would get, because we were almost shovel-ready the first time. And, you know, even though we said, oh, just go down to number six, you won't have a problem. But then, of course, FDOT changed how they do, they took it, no longer doing the projects. So that's, you know, it was kind of a kick in the gut for us. But now we've got some traction back in this, and staff, and myself, and TPO are working as good partners. And we're, I think we have a good partnership now with the county engineering, not that we ever did, but just a good understanding. And so we're kind of excited to, but no, I can't. I don't have the magic ball. It was like a five-year, though.
Tony played a big factor in it. He said, there's a lot more funding coming available.
I was about to say, yeah.
So where we set 20 on the list, now it doesn't matter what number you are. It matters on how interested we can get the state and how we can build our partnership with the county that can kick us off a lot quicker.
Right.
So we could be looking at a three- to five-year tentative, just depending on if the funding stays available and if we get the right people interested.
The reason I asked that question, I did see some documentation that this concept had a timeframe of five years, like 2018 to 2023. And in order to stay in the game, you have to fill out applications on time and not kind of think that you're still in the game. You have to make sure you are, you know, filling out things at the right time.
Well, and that, well, we had done that. We had done all of, we had crossed our Ts and dotted our Is. FDOT F D O T, F D O T changed the game on us. That had nothing to do with our staff or anything that TPO did. It was a strictly, and when we went to the county at that time, because we had a conversation with Dawn and myself, and it was right at the beginning of COVID and we all, and Rob Bombs and some engineers from over in Oak County, I don't remember the names, excuse me. But it was basically like, hey, we've got too much on our plates. Sorry, guys, we weren't expecting to have to do this. Yes, sir.
Not only that, but there was one other factor that went, we were kicking us down the list.
Speaking to a microphone.
Was the pedestrian bridge as part of the project. So, I don't know if that's. If we do a phase A, phase B, or phase one, phase two, if the bridge is going to slow the project down, we can eliminate that as a phase one project and work on just the road corridor itself and then in the future work on the bridge. So he said, one of the key factors is pay attention to how that bridge played a role. Because the environmental impact study is why everybody shied away from it and it got bumped down the list and then got us where we're at today.
Okay.
One of the factors.
Okay, very good. All right, any other board reports by anyone? So let's go to item number four. My pleasure to invite Adam Parker, the president of the Dunellen Little League, to come speak to council. I know in the two plus years I've been on the council, I think this is the first time I can remember someone from the Little League actually coming up here and speaking to us. So welcome, sir.
Thank you. Thank you for making me a part of your agenda today. Again, my name is Adam Parker. I am the president, current president of Dunellen Little League.
Address two, please.
One one, or I'm sorry, one two two one four Bridges Road is the address of Dunellen Little League. I took over a year and a half ago. Basically COVID messed us up. So I started this off as my first year, I call it my first year. We got, we were able to get two weeks of play in last year before I had to tell one hundred and sixty-five, one hundred and seventy-five kids that they cannot come back to the ballpark until further notice. But this year, we've been thankful of the numbers we've gotten for, we've got about one hundred and sixty-five kids. That rate, that's from age four up to age sixteen. We just put on two more teams in our senior division. So it's only been by God's grace that we were able to have a Little League this year. And I'm definitely appreciative of that. When I took over the Little League, I don't, I can't answer for anything that happened before me because I had no, I had no affiliation with the board. I can only answer from a year and a half to now. But to my knowledge, there was not a relationship with the city, or if there was, it was, there was tension there. Like I said, I'm not here to talk about the past, but going forward, there's some things that I have a wish list of the ballpark I would, I'm just asking today if anybody knows of any grants or if the city would like to be a partner with us out there. After all, whether anybody likes it or not, Dunellen Little League is in the City of Dunellen and we bring a lot of people from surrounding counties here, just in our district. Of those one hundred and sixty-five kids, they come from Marion Oaks, Citrus Springs, Inglis, and I believe up to Morse. And when we have games, we have, we have three to five games a week right now during our season, our spring season. And our district is huge. Our district spreads to Silver Spring shores, Dixie County comes down and plays us, Spring Hill, we also go to their areas. But so we have a lot of people that come to Dunellen Little League and also the City of Dunellen afterwards to spend money at restaurants or wherever. Dunellen Little League is a, it's not like any other baseball park that you go to. I, I ask that you go visit other baseball parks around the area and you will see Dunellen is the only one who is ran by volunteers. Everywhere else is county maintained. Somebody lives in that park or is an employee of that particular county and their job is to work at that ballpark, not Dunellen Little League. Dunellen Little League is built with strictly volunteers. I have a full-time job. We have ten board members. Every one of them have full-time jobs. The people who I can call at any time, they have full-time jobs. And that's how that place operates. That place, anything, any type of repairs is needed. Like if we're able to do it and save the money, then we do it. And it all comes off, a lot of the repairs that get done or anything gets done out there is out of our own bank accounts. So there are some, some issues out there that is a little bit overwhelming for us to take home out of our own bank accounts or we probably will be divorced. Or, you know, whatever. But so that's basically why I'm here today, to see if y'all are interested or the city is interested in joining us to making that place a better place for kids to come out and have fun, play baseball and softball. I can't leave them out. And so that's basically why I'm here.
Counsel, do you have any comments for him? I think this is pretty compelling what he's presenting to us.
Hey, thank y'all. Again, like I told you back there, you know, Little League field, my husband played there when he was a young man and, or a young kid, and then he took on and coached for his son. We had our daughter and she did horseback riding. But, and so I was a widow. I was a baseball widow, as I always called it. So, and I know it's always been on volunteers even when it started. So thank you for your hard work. In fact, you, you're bringing to point something that I stated a couple of weeks ago that we need to, because we do have a lease with the state in order for the baseball park to be out there. So Dunellen is a partner, even though we have sadly been, become a silent partner. Back in the old days when I was on city council a long time ago, we did actually sponsor some teams. So we have not always been a silent partner and it is disheartening to go out there. What are some of the main issues that you're having right now as far as, I mean, you know, the repairs? I know there, I mean, A, I love the new shade things that y'all have. Man, where were those when I was pregnant? But so I mean, there have been some great improvements. I'm sure you or, you know, members have put those up voluntarily. But what are some of the concerns that you have now for safety issues?
When I took over, there was two main issues I wanted to take care of. Lights, stadium lights, irrigation. We can pretty much check off the irrigation part. I was out there all day today digging trenches, trying to figure out where things are either broken or needed repair. So we're almost, we've almost accomplished the goal of fixing our irrigation. The lights, there are thirty-six lights that need to be replaced. And that's on all seven fields, we have seven fields. So there's thirty-six total lights. And it's not the light bulb. We've already had a company out there to check the majority of those bulbs and it turns out to be the ballast. The ballast are approximately three hundred and sixty dollars a piece, times thirty-six. Can't do it. And then, and then the labor obviously to install those. If we could convert to an LED system, that would, that would take off. We wouldn't have to replace all of those. Which we all know LEDs a little bit more expensive. But last, so the lights were my, my first priority and I was working, we actually completed a grant from Little League to try to get the lights fixed, the funding for the lights. Covid, Covid shut that down. And so therefore we have not been able to get with Little League, get back with Little League and update anything or half the time I wouldn't call you back. So that's been, that was my number one issue was the lights. Like I said, irrigation, but we've almost fixed that. The fields, the fields over time have developed ridges. And if you could, I invite anybody to come out there and you, and you'll see what I'm talking about when I talk about ridges. I can't explain how it's happened, but when the field turns into grass, there's, there's usually a ridge. And try running with your head up and to catch a fly ball or something to that effect and you just flat out, your feet can, you know, you can lose balance or whatever. So fixing the fields, that takes heavy equipment. That takes a lot of time. You got to find out where all the irrigation, the heads are. So there's a lot to account there that I personally can't, I can probably come up with a heavy equipment, but then there's time. Like I said, we have full-time jobs. The, you mentioned the bleacher canvas thing. That was when that, I want to say Luke Gibbs is, he's the person who oversaw that. And that was fourteen thousand dollars worth of canvassing they put up. Last story to the seams, they don't handle the sun very well, so the seams are starting to come apart. So I would love to somehow figure out a way to reseam them. Some of them are hanging down, some of them need to be cleaned. We've actually, I've got a guy who's started trying to clean them because of the debris and from the trees above. They just, they, they've been out there so long and without any attention that they just, they finally need to be fixed. Look, our concession, I would love to remodel the concession. That concession is what keeps Dunellen Little League alive. I'm telling you, we have three to five games a week during the season. That concession is the core, to pay for the lights, our light bill, to pay for our water bill and any other fees. Like I don't, we don't even charge for All-Stars. We don't, we don't charge for certain things. Our, our registration fee is fifty dollars. You're never going to go to a ballpark anywhere around here and pay a fifty-dollar registration fee. So we stepped out on faith and charged fifty dollars and hoping that our concession, our sponsors, anybody who donates would take care of the rest. And so far that has worked out, that has worked out great. So our concession, I would love to remodel it. Any repair, there's a lot of repairs that need to be done to that place. Is it still functioning? Yes, it's still functioning. We're still able to provide food and produce whatever we need to keep that place alive. It's some, you know, smaller stuff like our little farm field, they've only got one set of bleachers. I would love to get another, two sets of bleachers. Our age group from T-ball and farm field, that's the future of Dunellen Little League right there. Pull it down there. That's our future. So if we can keep those parents and those families right there happy, then I think we're going to have a good, have good years to come with the Little League. Bathrooms need some attention, new toilets. I've got at least three urinals in the men's bathrooms that they stayed, the valve stayed on. I can't get them to shut off. I have to physically shut the water off to, to get them to stop running. So I've, we've had to take them up and put them out of commission. We have one bathroom where I can't even open because there's, there's so many toilets and urinals that are, they're just not functioning. And we've had Mike Scott Plumbing out there several times. They have not charged us at all. Whenever they come out there, they don't ever charge us. And they have, they have continued to come and fix them, but they just, they need to be replaced flat out. They do the best they can. So, and I would love to do automatic shut offs for faucets. Because T-ballers and farm kids love to turn waters on, but they can't figure out how to turn them off. So that just raises our bill, our water bill a little higher. So that, those are just a few things. I know it sounds like a lot, but this list was doubled. And I have, me, I can't take all the credit. Me and several other folks have, we've spent some dollars out there replacing things, fixing things and trying to make up. Every field has a new scoreboard now. I just got one delivered today for our junior field. So every field, I'm sorry, six of the seven fields have brand new scoreboards and that's all from donations.
Okay, Adam. This is a starting point. You came into the building, you've introduced yourself and you're back now on our mind. Would you mind introducing the young gentleman who's in the audience?
This is my son Wiley Parker. He's played out there ten years from T-ball and now he's up in the juniors.
All right, very good.
And he's playing juniors and seniors.
I'm sure this is going to be something council's going to discuss and going forward, how we may help if we can. I don't know the legal, there's always seems to be legal things attached to these things where you have a private organization on a public plea, piece of land and whatever. This is a starting point. We'll see where it leads to.
Yes, sir.
Okay.
I'm not asking for all this. I understand. I'm just, we're just here to probably gain a partnership, maybe get a little help that'll make a big impact on that place.
What, what days of the week do you have most of your games in case anybody would want to come out and watch?
Tuesday, Thursday, Saturday. Now those are the main three days.
Tuesday, Thursday, Saturday, Tuesday evening?
Tuesday evening, games start at six o'clock and they'll run until, we cannot start anything after nine o'clock. So we plan on six to nine.
Okay.
And then Saturdays, ten, we usually have games at ten and one. I will say this, April twenty-third, twenty-fourth and twenty-fifth, we are hosting a big tournament for ages eight, nine and ten. They'll be coming from different counties and we're actually hosting the championship, which will be on the twenty-fifth. We're going to see a lot of people travel down St. Patrick's Road on that weekend, a lot of people, thousands of people.
Thank you very much.
I'd like to add my thank yous too. Nothing is more important than our youth and the dedication that their parents have and the public. And we really appreciate what you're doing. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay, and I'm going to do my best here shortly to come out and catch a game.
All right, sounds good. We'll be there tomorrow night.
Thank y'all for your hard work. Good luck this season.
Excellent. All right.
Yes.
Go talk to him.
Three five two four two seven. You said you were ready.
That was good.
Thank you, Mr. Parker.
Okay, moving right along, we're at agenda number five, Rainbow Springs Art Group presented by Miss Susan Jones.
Thank you. I'm representing Rainbow Springs Art, as the mayor said, two oh eight oh four, I've got that right, glasses on, West Pennsylvania Street. I'm here to report that the art festival that was held March twentieth was a roaring success. It was attended by approximately two thousand people. We had over a hundred sales in the gallery that day, which is exponentially more than we normally average on a daily basis. We raised over eight hundred, or almost eight hundred dollars for educational scholarships for local art students. And we had local art students and their teachers participate in the festival as well. There were Roblox provided by the city, which we're very appreciative of, illuminated sign, repairing of the potholes. All of the city support was critical to the success of the event, as was the sponsors from our local business community and the volunteers who were there. So I'm here just to tell you it was a success. We are very happy and appreciative. And we are so jazzed that we may have a fall show and actually do two this year where we normally would only do one. Are there any questions?
I don't have any questions, but I was there and there were lots of people and lots of tents and lots of good stuff. It was very, very nice. To my surprise, I did get a call that I won a gift, which never ever happens, from the rifles. So I was all excited, sitting in the drive-through at the bank when I got the call.
Yeah, I won too. The raffle is how we raise the money for the scholarships.
Yes.
And the artists who are members typically donate art of their own. So it really is a smart thing to buy twenty, thirty raffle tickets because you're probably going to get something really nice. Especially if you put them in late in the day, but anyway. My own strategy. So it's not just the art group that benefits from this, it's, it's everyone in the community.
One thing I would just like to say to you is, I went to it myself, and I was surprised how many people showed up. It was kind of a cold, kind of a cold day, a little overcast.
Right, yes.
In fact, when I left to attend, I says, oh, I don't know how this is going to go over, because it just, the weather felt kind of raw. And I was amazed how many people were there. And the one thing I'd just like to say publicly is, these events, the art festival, it not only brings people that come and support the art festival and the crafts and things related to that, but if you go to the businesses that are in the historic section, during these events, they're, they're having some of the best days of the year, because as people come to these festivals for that reason, the art, are also going and getting a cup of coffee, they're going into the gift shops, they're getting something to eat. So it would really be interesting how much money the art festival actually brings into the city. I think it'd be a number that would be pretty, pretty impressive.
I think there's a formula that the TDC people in Ocala have where we can predict that or estimate it, and it is significant. And Mayor, I'll look that one up for you. Because there, there are residual benefits, it's even greater if you have a two-day event, which is a stretch for us as a small organization. The two-day event, you actually get people to come in and stay in hotel rooms and dine out more and do more shopping, that kind of thing. But we had vendors sell out of inventory, and that's an awesome problem.
Yeah. Yeah, I'm part of the tourist development committee in Marion, and that's really where their focus, I'm, I'm learning that their events that they put on, whether it's baseball tournaments, or horse shows, or concerts, they, they track very closely how it impacts hotel usage, restaurants. And that's a big part of their plan, is to have these events that brings people into the city for the event, but while they're there, they spend money on other things and support the businesses.
Well, since you brought that up, Mayor, in the past, we have gotten grants from the Ocala Marion County Tourist Development Group, and they've been instrumental in helping us do more marketing. We didn't have those this year because of COVID, which is one of the reasons we went to a one-day show and downsized it. But the response from people was tremendous, and I'm hoping that those grants will be available for fall events, because it would help us market it more aggressively if we do decide to have one in November.
And that's a very good idea. I think on our city events, if we, and I'll help on this, we try to tie them into the county and get a push from the county. That is, they're pushing other events, they're pushing our events also. So very good.
We'll be happy to write a grant application.
Now we're going to, I believe, the last presentation by an individual, number six. Ms. Kathy Dunn, thank you.
I live at 11386 Hendrick Drive, and I've been living here for three and a half years in Dunellen, and I've been concerned about the, the lack of upkeep of the whole city. And even though Dunellen has beautiful people and it's a beautiful place to live, I think with a little bit of tweaking and a little bit of group effort, or a lot of group effort, we can make it even more beautiful. We could attract more businesses to fill up some of our vacant buildings and attract more residents rather than renters, or homeowners rather than residents. And if you look back in 2010, our population has only increased 1.2% since 2010. So what are we doing wrong? And I feel like getting the city to be presented as a better, a more beautiful place would help us in every way. So I decided to start a beautification forum. So I went around and took some pictures, and the goals of this beautification committee are to identify, and that should be on-
Ready?
Yeah, yeah. I just made a word, that word document. The goals of this beautification group are to identify the existing eyesores in our town, to develop a plan for remediation or amelioration of the eyesores. Three, to recruit citizen volunteers that will participate in workdays for local projects. And my plan would be to do one per quarter. So far, I've got about 26 volunteers. Then, the next goal would be to work with Dunellen Planning Board to identify codes that are being violated, or if new codes should be codified, so that we can enforce them. Another goal would be to assist local businesses in finding grants that they could use to help with improving the appearance of their properties, such as CRA grants. We could help them fill them out, and then they could make some small improvements that would help the appearance for everybody. The other thing would be work with code enforcement officers to encourage notification to property owners regarding code violations. To work with Dunellen Public Works Director to develop a plan that begins to address specific problem areas in our city. And we've already done that. Troy has been very generous with his time in helping us figure out how to start our first project and how to find the money to do that project. To recruit information and assistance from county and state governments that might develop economic opportunity zones. So Florida has economic opportunity areas for low-income areas, and I think we would probably qualify if we would seek out this designation. To identify professional firms that can hold seminars with citizens and businesses to outline cohesive design strategies for the Dunellen business area. Rather than a big, large project, to just, what are some things that we could do to bring it all together, little, small changes. To talk with city and county government officials to provide economic incentives to encourage development of vacant structures. So right now, what we've got, we've got 26 volunteers, and we met with Troy, and we got the county agent from Marion County to come over and identify some plantings that could be done, because we felt like doing City Hall landscaping. If you notice, there's a lot of, there's not a lot of landscaping out there. A lot of the bushes are dead, and it would just present Dunellen City Hall in a better light to have, fix it up landscaping-wise. So we got the county agent to come over and show us some ideas for some plants that we could put in. And so, right now, we're going to get some prices together for those plants, and then with Troy and with the help of the city council, we might need to get some approval for some funds. And the volunteers would come and prepare everything, take out the dead plants, and then put in some new plants. It'd probably be a two-day process. So that would be our first project, which might be able to be taking place in the second part of the month of May, if we got approval for this. So I went around and took some pictures to show you some of the eyesores that I identified and some ideas I had for fixing those up. And if we could, I'm just going to- That is an entrance to our city. It definitely signed. Should be taken down or repaired. And so it's just, it's a real, it's a big eyesore. Yes. Really? Why? That's the kind of thing that we need to go undercover and figure out how to, how to figure this out, because it really is just a terrible eyesore.
Where's it located? Where's this?
Right before you, on 484, when you come right before you go to the bridge, right before you get to Swampy's. It's probably the old welcome to Dunellen sign. Now, we could get somebody to repaint it, make a new plywood cover and paint a new something-something.
It's a taken sign.
I've thought about getting a chainsaw and go out there at midnight. Go ahead, Mandy. Would anybody care? Probably not. That is what I perceive as an excess of signage, which to me, signage is a big issue in our town. Too much signage, which makes our town look cluttered and messy, especially since all the signs are cattywampus. But Troy has told me that some of these signs we might be able to get rid of, because nobody pays any attention to them anyway. That no parking stuff. There's a no parking on every-
Good for you, Troy.
On those lines. So go ahead, Mandy. Just next time you drop by, look at it, and when you see it and really look at it, we get so used to seeing the things every day that we don't see it. And to me, that would be a big thing. The other thing is the placement of the dumpsters. Could we ask the property or waste management if they can move them to the back of the building or to the side? That face is right on Pennsylvania. Or conversely, could we make a little shield for them? Go ahead, Mandy. But to me, that's a big eyesore. That is that shed place, which in and of itself needs a lot of help. And how we're going to approach these businesses, it needs to be a buy-in from the businesses, the Chamber of Commerce, the city government, and the citizens. And we know that if we do these things, Dunellen's going to look so much better, and it's going to help everybody. The signs need to be washed. The big thing too is, you notice, every, just about every sign in this town is covered with mold, and it just looks like nobody cares. And the poles that hold the sign up are all rusty, and they just look terrible. As you see, the sign under the Dunellen sheds is blown out. That's another big problem. Because they've been up there so long, and I guess with hurricanes, they get blown out. So go ahead. That, signs that can no longer be read, would this, would the business owner agree to take some of these things down that are redundant and faded and can't be read anyway? That's the house on Pennsylvania that maybe we could, as volunteers, come and put some bushes in for them, to maybe ask them if they can move their mops to the backside of the house, or put up a little cover for it. But it's, you know, it's an entryway to our city. It's our, it really is our historic district, right, Troy?
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, I mean, that's part of our historic district. Go ask Michelle and Sean if we could go wash, pressure wash the roof, and see, they would, whoever owns that building would plant some plants. So it's, it's collaboration, and I know this is not going to happen overnight, but I think that if we started looking at our town a little bit more, with a little bit more of an aesthetic eye, I think we would have more businesses come and more homeowners come. It would just present itself better. Go ahead, Mandy. That's that vacant piece of property across from the pawn shop, and they finally mowed it this week. But that's a pretty big centralized area that should be kept up by the owners, and I think they're parking their cars on it now, which doesn't help. So, Troy?
I just want to enter-
Troy, pop in with everyone.
Interact with, just real quick, it's not them parking their cars there, they've been generous enough to let my employees from my shop to park there this week while they're tearing up our driveway.
Okay.
Yes.
Okay. Well, I noticed it a long time ago, so, I don't know. Anyway, that is one of the worst ones, right there across from the car wash, which needs to go next. That is just, well, that would look better with, with a shield. I don't know if we'll get it or not, but I think it's going to be better when we get the thing done with, on your street, Troy, and possibly put a sign up that says Ernie Mills Park, because I've lived here for three years before I ever knew Ernie Mills Park was there. Next. That is, there's a lot of dead shrubs around that need to be dug up, and that's something that volunteers could do, and possibly county workers that, you know, the prisoners that come work on the road, we've gotten approval for them to come and work, and maybe that would be something that we could give them to help with. That building, we need to approach the owner and see if they would pressure wash it or just wash it, and put some new plants, keep going, fix the awnings, maybe paint the awnings. It's really one of the key historic buildings in our town, I think. It sits in the main intersection, and we just need to see if we can get the owner to make it look better. The one thing I think would help our city is to get rid of the billboards that hunker over the downtown area, because they're just not very attractive, and I think we ought to do some research to find out how to get rid of these when the contracts expire. That is a residence over on Bostick Avenue, which probably needs code enforcement to fix, you know, make it look better. Next. That is something that possibly the volunteers could handle. Coming up is fixing up some of the shrubs on the houses that lie right on the highway to improve the shrubbery, and as you see the front door, paint the front door. Either appeal to the homeowners, or find some volunteers to help the homeowners. See, just a few things could help, just trimming back the shrubbery, planting some new shrubbery. Next. That is where people are parking cars in their yard, and this is in the historic area. So, I mean, it's just, this is the area of town that we're spending all the money in, but yet we're not making the people that live or rent keep up with the codes. Next. Same thing. Next. Same thing. They have a washer and dryer on the front porch. This is right near the All Souls Church. Next. That, I want to appeal to the civic clubs in town to get some new signs for when you come down 40 and you go into Dunellen City, because most of them are faded and old and can't be read. Next, that sits right across from Grumble's House, and I don't know if, whether that's a rental or someone owns it, but it needs to be drastically fixed up as far as the shrubbery. That is our gazebo out in front of City Hall, and the nandina need to be either taken out or replaced, one or the other. So we're looking at that. Troy's, Troy's right on it. Next. As you see, we've got one lone azalea bush on the left, and on the right by the fence, those are all just volunteers that, 50 different plants. And even though it doesn't look bad, it could look a lot better with just a little bit of attention. And that's where the volunteers would come in and could do that. That, I would like to see if possibly we could go to these businesses and ask for, help them fill out a CRA grant to put up a shield for some of the car places, especially the transmission shop.
Is a shield, you've said that a few times. What is a shield?
A fence. A fence, a little barrier, to make it to where it shields the cars from view, some way. That's another one of our residents in the historic area. Next. That's our post office annex, and that might be something that the volunteers could wash, or they would do if we brought it to their attention. Because you do see it when you come, make a left out of the library. Next. Same thing. Next. That is an old air pumping station on 41 that maybe they would agree to take down. Next. Another thing, right off of 41 in the historic area. Next. That is an example of the historic area where the trees and the bushes just get overgrown and the sidewalk gets moldy. And with Troy, I mean, he has such a small staff, it's just very hard for him to do it. But we might be able to appeal to the neighborhood leaders, which we're working on that too, to get some neighborhood liaisons, to get a workday for the neighborhood to come out and trim their bushes and clean their sidewalk. Next. That's another one that faces the middle school, and it's, I don't think anybody lives there, it's just a storage area. Next. That's a residence over by, right down the street from Grumble's House. Next. That's the Buck Corn Bar, and that's, is actually, the top is rented out and actually- And that's, is actually, the top is rented out and actually a woman and 13 children live in that but corn bar. The bottom is just full of storage. So, that is an area that I, you know, it might be something to look at for the city to make that into a parking area because really it can't be fixed up. But this is, you know, just something to think about. Next. That's the other, other part of the but corn bar. The traffic pattern right there, I was wondering if the city, um, the Ms. Hancher, when you go and talk to the city, the county Department of Transportation, do they ever look at some of these intersection, that intersection in particular, about possibly taking that out? Or looking at our main intersection there? Do they ever come do studies about?
They do, yes.
Yeah. Because I was wondering, it really doesn't serve that much of a purpose. And there is a historical reason for it, but it might be something that the Department of Transportation could consider taking out.
Do you see that big silver box right there?
Yeah, the silver box, yeah.
That's where we have to have the lights right now.
For the traffic light?
Yes ma'am. That can't be taken out at this time.
Yeah, well...
And, and the arm lights are extremely expensive.
Yeah. It's just hard, it's hard to keep that area looking nice because it gets run into all the time.
So, Kathy?
Yeah.
Could you, could you kind of like three, four more minutes wrap up?
Sure, sure.
We have a, we have a big agenda tonight.
Sure, go ahead. Go ahead, Mandy. That's the mattress shop, next. And that is really the flat iron building that's very historic. And again, that might be helpful to get a CRA grant, to get it pressure washed. And I noticed he's getting a new sign. So, these are just things that I wanted to bring to the attention of the city to start looking at this with a critical eye, to see what we could do as a collaboration to make it look better. So, thank you very much.
Come on. Yes.
I just wanted to say to Ms. Dunn, one of the houses that she mentioned that's on Bostick Street, that's incorrect. That is on McKenney Avenue. McKenney Avenue and Bostick kind of intersects, am I correct? Okay. That's okay.
Any other comments?
I was just lost when you said Bostick.
And, and I just want to make sure that the citizens do know that we have the CRA fund grants out there. We have it for years, for at least since probably 2016, Mandy? I think. Um, so I know that, you know, and we have tried encouraging businesses to come to us to get funding to do, um... Like I know they did it on Powell Road. But, but I mean, we've tried going up to them and handing them paychecks. Um, you know, we have tried getting that information out to citizens in that CRA districts. So, you know, and it's out there and we've asked the newspapers to publicize it. And, and, you know, I know the chamber has given that information out. And I know, um, you know, other council members have walked around and told them about it. So, um, you know, they just need to get up and do. Good presentation, thank you.
Right. Very good. Ms. Dunn, a couple of things. Number one, one thing that pops out immediately is the number of signs in the city. Not necessarily just business signs, but speed signs, parking signs, whatever. And they're everywhere. And a lot of them have been there so long and have gone through hurricanes, time accidents, that many of them are tilted and whatever. And many of them are also very faded out. And they just, when you see those signs, you know, number one, there's lots of them. Number two, they're put up at various angles. Over time, they haven't been reset. And many of them are weathered to the point that some of them, you, driving 35 miles an hour would be a challenge if you could even read the sign, they're so faded. So, um, yes, there's no question. What I, what I would suggest, if I was part of this, is I would pick out a key building or a key area that has high visibility. Focus on that and get kind of a pop, you know, where everybody goes, wow, look at that, look at the difference. And then maybe that will be the little spark you need to have it, have it spread. So, that is it. And the, the one sign I found, I had to snicker a little bit, is where we have the painted, uh... It's painted on the road, it clearly says you can't park here. As we also have a part, a sign next to it that says no parking. You know, that's, I guess we're trying to really make a point that you're not supposed to, most of the park there, but I found that interesting. Okay, we're ready to move on to number seven. Thank you very much. Some great, uh, some outstanding presentations today. Going to item number seven, community development manager applicants. As you all know, this has been a, something that the city's been working on for quite a while. It's a very important, critical position for the city. No. And it, it has always been, it's a challenging position to find someone who has the credentials that they need, has the experience that they need and is working within the salary range that the city can afford. It's not only been a challenge now, it's been a challenge historically in the past. This has been a very difficult position to fill, but we're working on it. So, um, we do, from what I understand, have a couple applicants. And Mandy, do you, do you speak from this point?
I did give you a handout. I put together a summary.
Talk into the microphone, Mandy.
I put together a summary of the two applicants and, and put it up there at your spots. We did receive two applications, finally, for the position. One, let's drag this over here. Is Lisa Walsh.
Blow that up a little bit.
And the other is Cynthia McWilliams. And I've sort of just laid out their education, experience, work history, um, down below, their skills, knowledge. These are all areas of the employment application that they complete. Both appear to be very qualified. Ms. Walsh has been with the City of Ocala since 2011 and was with the, with Marion County prior to that. Ms. McWilliams has been self-employed for a number of years, but has done a lot of landscape architecture. If you want any more detail, you can see it in their applications. They are saved in your backup folder there. Their resume and their application.
Is Ms. Walsh, is she currently employed by the City of Ocala?
Uh, yes.
And what is her position with the City of Ocala?
She's their economic development coordinator.
And Ms. Williams, is she currently employed?
She's self-employed.
Self-employed right now. Have you had an opportunity to speak to either of the women?
I did speak to Ms. Walsh. She is still interested, it was last week that I spoke to her, um, to sort of explain the process. Um, I have not spoken with Ms. McWilliams. We received an email from her that, um... That, that sort of, uh, I don't think it would work for us. Uh, she's made a request to, um, work a, if hired, to work a hybrid schedule, which would, she was asking to only be in the office from 9:00 AM to 1:00 PM, Monday through Thursday, and then work remotely, um, the rest of the week. I didn't really feel like that was what, what you guys were looking for.
So let me just move over. Anybody else wants to speak, just let me know. So we just talked about, Ms. McWilliams had scheduling issues where she could work certain days and certain days she can't work and things like that. Ms. Walsh, she has her master's degree. She has 20 years urban planning experience. Works for the City of Ocali, Ocala in Economic Development. City of Ocala Senior Planner. Works with the Board of County Commissioners as a Senior Planner. Knowledge expert in land use and planning, environmental resources, site plan review, historic preservation redevelopment and economic development. License and certificates in Qualified Stormwater Inspector, FEMA, NIMS.
Professional Incident Management System.
Former President of the Toastmasters and Liaison for the Downtown Business Alliance and Main Street Groups. Which indicates to me she's a very involved person. Both women, if you go to Ms. McWilliams, she has a degrees in landscape architecture, planning and, uh, and site design. She's trying to focus on things that work with us. Planning Coordinator for Emerson-Walder School Development Company, Community Planning Manager. She has experience in graphics, zooms and Excel. Master planning, recreation planning, urban planning, landscape architecture and design. She's a very strong candidate in her own right to... So just taking, taking from the comments that I've heard from you is you, you feel both of these women are very qualified. What, Ms. McWilliams, the, the issue that would have is that within the needs of the job description, meaning time-wise, in the days that you're required to be here and the hours you're supposed to be here, that is, that would be problematic for her. Right? Okay. So does anybody else have any comments?
I do. In regard to, um, Ms. Walsh, did she mention to you or did you ask her in regard to comprehensive plan?
Did not.
I think that when we do go forward with some kind of an applicant, we do need some background in comprehensive planning. That would be the thing that I would be, um, wondering about in regard to both applicants, but in particular. I know that our community development, um, is so, so critical to so many of the issues that have come up from the public today. And it's going to require somebody that knows how to write some ordinances and knows how to do comprehensive planning. That would just be my...
Yes. Ms. McWilliams, I guess that restriction of hours is probably because she's separate from...
I'm not sure. She had just had made that request. Didn't really say why.
Dan?
I would say Lisa Walsh would be the standout of the two candidates, largely because what I see from 2002 to 2011, which is a nine-year span. She worked as Marion County Commissioner's Board Senior Planner, which tells me she's been there and done it. I'm also interested in what certifications she has from the state that might not be included here on this brief resume.
It, I, I just took everything exactly from what I was provided.
I, I understand. I, I just wondered if there could be further investigation as to if she had certifications that were current?
Well, she's got a FEMA certification, National Incident Management, hazmat.
Oh, that, okay.
Qualified Stormwater Inspector. She's AICP Certified Planner. What more you would want?
I, I agree.
Thanks, Mary.
Those are all current. That's awesome. Yep, that's awesome.
Thanks, ma'am.
And again, this is where this, you know, I appreciate you putting this together for us. Like this is good, you know. I will just state that I do know Ms. McWilliams, she goes to my church. And I just stalked Ms. Welch on Facebook. So they're both horse people, I can't tell you that much. But, um, you know, if I look at the certifications and such, I would have to, um... Probably ask that Ms. Welch come in and speak. For us, you know, and, and this is where I wish we had already put some guidelines in place for that Mandy knows what to ask and not to ask. When we get, um, job applications come up for these situations, um, that way she's not having to, you know, keep calling back and forth and forth and then come back and talk to us. Now, Ms. Welch, does she understand that? And I guess I don't know this answer even to ask you. Do we now have a, have a special workshop for her to come in front of us and interview her? Or how, how is this working?
That I would...
I mean, because we never, because that was the problem with doing this, that we never set any procedures up. So I don't know how we proceed when we have no procedures. So, that's why I just want some guidance from those powers that be.
Andrew, you and I have spoke at length about this, so, um, can you kind of connect the dots?
Ultimately, uh, you know, the legislation and so forth that the council adopted, um, it places council in the position to make the final decision. And as far as how council wants to go forward and, uh, Mandy is, or the city clerk position is, is making recommendations and that's part of the job responsibilities there. So that would come at, uh, at some sort of a, um, meeting. But how you want to proceed in the interim and, and get to that is, is at the discretion of council.
Okay, well, what we're dealing with right here is, that is something we're aware of because we just passed the ordinance. And we now know we need to put in the procedures. So this is kind of like a one-time situation where we have a job opening that's been opening, been open and it's critical that we fill it. It's been amazing the city's functioned for as long as it has without having this position filled. So, we're really not in a position to... Council has already said that we have the ability to hire someone. So we're really not in a position to delay a decision on a qualified person because we have not yet spelled out in detail the process by which we go about doing that. You know? Kind of like when the ship is, got a hole in it, you try to, oh, keep the ship going while you repair the hole, right? So, where, where I'm kind of at with this is I'm, I'm amazed we were devoid of people with these sort of qualifications for a long time. And now suddenly we have two people coming here that look like they would be... And now suddenly we have two people come in here that look like they would be very qualified for what we're looking for. So what I'm hopeful of is that the council now would do whatever it needs to do to make a decision on which one of these two people make the decision. And we will then continue to work on the procedures of how we go about this as these things come up in the future.
I'm saying, so are you just saying, and I don't, you know, so are you just saying that on Monday night we should vote? I mean, if I had to pick between A and B, I'd pick Ms. Walsh for her recommendations. But we haven't spoken to her, we haven't discussed salaries with her, we haven't interviewed her, so what are you asking? I mean, do you just want us to hire her?
Well, I...
Yes, I do agree with Councilwoman Handshaw that we definitely need to have some in-depth interviews because it's not so much that we need somebody immediately, we need someone long-term. And if we get the wrong person, we are not going to, it's not going to reflect very well on our judgment, A, or B, it will not go to the fiscal health of the city. So I am more concerned about maybe doing some recruiting. I think it's even possible because this is really just saying you need A or B, it's not much of a selection process. And I do think, what are you smiling about?
Go ahead.
We have advertised this position very extensively for well over a month now.
Right, and I agree. And I have looked at some of the advertising and I think it has been excellent, especially, I'm trying to remember the website that you had it in, which was very well spelled out. I think it was, at any rate, when I speak of recruiting, I think maybe it will be incumbent upon some of us to contact Marion County and some of these other cities around us and see if we cannot give some verbal attention to the fact that we are searching. I thought the literature that you sent out, I can't remember the one agents, or one website that you sent out, it was a recruiting website.
We've advertised on ZipRecruiter, we've advertised on Florida League of Cities website, the FCCMA website, the American Association of Planners website, the Florida Association of Planners website. Indeed, Tampa Bay Times, Gainesville Sun. I've run it through the college in Gainesville.
Yeah, I do, what I read was excellent in terms of the way she had it published. But obviously, we might have to fan the fire a little bit in order to get some attention by some of these people. I don't have any, I wouldn't mind working, for example, with some of my time to make some calls to, for example, the Urban College of the University of Florida and tell them that we really are in need and we have, our requirements are published and give them some direction and see if we can't get some attention. And I think the mayor could certainly be more than able or certainly is excellent at talking to the people in Marion County and let them know that we are in fact looking for more applicants. Then maybe, maybe we can spend a little bit more time and be more proactive in terms of the council going out there and trying to recruit some people.
Well, Ms. Kenny, I will say, I have been very involved with following up, checking up on this and following on it. And it has been exhaustive, what we have done to get to this point. Fanning the flames or doing more, there's not too much more we can do. What I was hopeful of is Mandy has come up with two applicants that look like they fit the bill. She has made on these two a recommendation. In the past, when we had the city administrator, there would be no recommendation, that hire would just simply be made by the city administrator. Mandy has absorbed most of those responsibilities with the caveat she can only recommend. Rather than her making the decision, which she probably would do if she was still empowered to do so, she would hire one of these two and might hire Ms. Walsh. She can't do that now because of the ordinance. That decision is on council. And her recommendation is based on everything she's done and the candidates that are out there. Lisa Walsh is an outstanding candidate. And I've talked to people through third parties about her and the city, and she is considered an outstanding person in the city and the city is not too happy about losing her.
Well, that's good to know. I think that that's the kind of information that we want to hear. But anyone have an objection if I were to myself personally talk to the people at the University of Florida and also see if we can get some other candidates that would be appropriate? I agree that she looks like a good candidate, but I think that we only have one candidate here. I'm not as impressed with the second candidate that we're looking at simply because I don't think that the depth of, the kind of needs we need in community development are critical to how the city's future is going to be.
Louise, I understand where you're coming from. The problem with going with UF, going to UF, you're going to get a lot of recent graduates with master's degrees in this area of planning, urban planning. Whoever, I think they, they're going to grossly lack the experience. Also, we're looking for someone who has commitments already, someone who already has roots close to our community.
I'm not saying that we necessarily...
Is it probable, Mr. Hand, that we, I could make a motion that we invite Lisa Walsh to our meeting? I have, would love to meet her in person. I know some of the people that she's worked with, Jay Bailey, for example, who's started from day one with the Economic Development Council in Ocala. Letters of reference, I would want to see from both candidates, but especially from Lisa Walsh. I think that's part of, definitely part of the hiring processes. Was there any letters of references forwarded to us? I think that's a must. So I think we should go on with these two candidates. And I think, I agree that Mandy has done the job of putting the word out. And if anybody from our universities and so on, graduate students are looking for employment in the area, I think they would have sought those sites out and take a look at what's being offered.
Councilwoman Cabbage, to answer your question, since this is a workshop format, no emotion would not be appropriate. That being said, council by consensus can ask Mandy to invite a particular candidate to come in and speak to the council. Now, of course, tonight, it being a workshop, no action can be taken, none of the candidates can be eliminated. But if council would like to speak to one in particular, and both, you know, with the understanding that both are formally considered for consideration until otherwise, you know, not everyone has to come in and have an opportunity to speak. Her invitation, of course, they have a right as a member of the public, but certainly that invitation could be made by council by consensus.
Okay, can we do that then, Mayor?
When I spoke with Lisa, like I said, I did not reach out to Ms. McWilliams because I did not, I didn't feel that she was going to be as good of a fit for us, considering that she wanted to work remotely the majority of the time. However, when I did speak with Ms. Walsh, I explained to her that we might invite her to the council meeting on Monday to speak to you guys. And she said that was perfectly fine. She would make arrangements to be here if that was what you requested. And if you would like, I can also reach out to Ms. McWilliams if you'd like to speak to her as well. But like Andrew said, you don't necessarily have to bring them both in, but you can...
Let's go down the line.
Are we done then, taking applicants? If we get any more applicants in, is there a deadline here that we're talking about?
Well, there was a deadline established whenever the position was advertised because you have to have a cutoff point at some point to where you can move forward. Because typically, you would have that cutoff point and that way you can start scheduling your interviews. And your goal is to get somebody hired as quickly as possible. You just leave it open-ended and...
No, that's why I asked, because I didn't know, having done this before with the city, when we were short on applicants, they extended the deadline. And they were able to get additional people so that you did have some competition, a little bit of competition in terms of peoples and their ability to come in and to present themselves. I have nothing against the procedure. I think you're doing the procedure exactly the way the ordinances were written. But we are not getting a lot of applicants. And so I'm just asking if we're not going to, if other people were, for example, if I were to spread the word a little bit and some of, to some of the people I know, and they came up with qualified people, would their application then be allowed or not?
If it's the will of the council to extend the deadline and not consider either one of these applicants, that's entirely...
Well, we could consider. I certainly want to consider the applicant, but I'd like to have a little bit of competition so that we were not, at this rate, we don't even have a lot of, I mean, it's just pretty cut and dry who we would have.
Ms. Williams?
I was going to ask if there's a closing date when you advertise a position, there is a closing date. I think you answered that too. And were these positions also advertised with Citrus leading Marion workforce?
Yes.
I've been retired since 2015, but I do know that they used to have a professional placement network. And they have staff who work strictly with professionals and trying to place some jobs.
And we did, we did work with someone through Career Source.
Okay.
I mean, it is, it's sad that we don't have more applicants. I'll just tell you right now, Rob Baum's over at TPO, he's also having to look for planners and such. And I did say, hey, you know, you don't think anybody's good for TPO, throw them our way. And so, you know, so the county does know that we are in need, you know, but he was like, well, I don't think we can just hand them over to you, you know, an application that might be good or not. But it is frustrating. I mean, he's having a hard time getting applicants for himself, for his, for the two positions he has to get hired. I think if we, you know, even though I personally like Ms. McWilliams, I think she's a very intelligent woman, and I could see a lot of benefits she could bring to the city. However, by looking at the two resumes in front of me, I would have to request an invitation to Ms. Welch on Monday night to come speak with us. Does not mean that we have to accept her. Just because we have her come talk to us does not mean that we have to hire her. But Mandy, did she give any indication of what type of salary she was looking at for the hire of the...
She, on her application, there is a place on the application for the salary that you're looking for, and she put $65,000.
Or max?
Seventy-two?
Seventy-four? That's before benefits.
Any other?
It's just amazing, from all the advertisement, that we only have two applicants. That's amazing. And no telling what people out there are looking at. There's been a lot, I'm just going to be me right now. There's been a lot of negativity going on about this little town. And I wouldn't, I'm sorry, I can understand if we don't get any more applicants.
Okay. What I can say is assure the council that our search has been exhaustive. There really isn't much more to do. And if there were any ideas that any individual council person might have had, it's been three months to jump in and throw out some ideas. It's kind of like the ship has sailed. We've had the opportunity and I guarantee you, there is not something more that we can do. The only thing we can do is just delay. So Andrew, clear this up for me. If we invited Ms. Walsh in Monday to speak with us, and she knocks it out of the box, what would council then be in the position to do?
Council could make a decision at that meeting to hire Ms. Walsh. Now, of course, if that were the case, I think that council should be prepared to consider, you know, things that would need to be considered, such as compensation and so forth. And if that were the case, that can be, you know, brought forward by the city clerk in advance of the meeting.
So Mandy, on the direction of council, could contact her and work out the details, what are your salary demands and various things?
She can receive the information. She wouldn't be at a stage where she could negotiate and so forth, but she can present information that she's received from the applicants to you. And so any sort of negotiation, if there were a negotiation or so forth, that would have to occur essentially with council.
Would council then have the opportunity to view that information before the Monday meeting? Like for instance, if Mandy got this information by noon or whatever, council would have a chance to, so we're not just reviewing it, you know?
Correct. It could be disseminated to council upon its receipt.
Is that something, Mandy, you can do between now and noon Monday? Give us some information.
Oh, reach out to her and see if she has letters of reference that Councilwoman Cabbage asked for, if she could forward those to me.
Questions to possibly, you know, council would be interested in when she'd be available, if she, if we decide to hire her, if she decides to accept, when she would be available to start. Seems like you already have her salary request, which is within the lines of what our parameters are. And I think Ms. Cabbage made a good point, a couple letters of reference, which I think certainly is...
Not going to have any bad ones.
But I will say to just, just to my council members, this has been a big worry for me in particular, and I'm sure a worry for y'all. And having someone like Ms. Walsh who's currently employed for the City of Ocala and in good standing over there, and for reasons, she's willing to come over here. Boy, what an opportunity for us. We need to check this out. So anyway, if there's a consensus by council, I would, I would like to invite her to the Monday meeting and see how this goes.
Mandy? This will quick, though, I want to make sure that we don't ask any questions that are not legal to ask, so...
I mean, and I don't want to ask a guy, I mean, I'm sure the guideline is, again, that's one of my worries about us doing this.
You don't want to ask personal questions.
Can you kind of highlight for us, because I know sometimes, you know, we're not supposed to hit reply all and we still hit reply all. So I'd like to get...
Just avoid personal questions such as age, marital status, religion, do they have children, you know, just anything that could be considered discriminatory, I would avoid asking. And just keep it professional.
Andrew, maybe possibly you could give us kind of a overview of the do's and don'ts of that.
Yeah, I think the, really, quite simply, the best advice...
Even in writing, if you want to do it for council, then it's...
The best advice I give the council is just to stick to her credentials and her experience. And if that's the case, you know, then it's hard to go afoul. But personal information and so forth, it's very, very easy and sometimes not forecastable where you can run afoul of that and what kind of rights you can... So medical information, anything that's not related to the job, future plans, whether or not someone intends to expand their family, become pregnant, has upcoming plans and so forth. If it's just related to their credentials, what they do for a living, you're okay. If it's just related to their credentials, what they do for a living, you're okay.
So, I would be expecting, if during the time we are asking her questions, if an inappropriate question is asked, you would intervene and just say, "Can't ask that question." Right?
I could do that for you. If I recognize I'm not an employment lawyer, but yes, I know that if someone's asked age and if they're asked certain things, then yes, I will be certain to keep an eye on them.
Okay, well, you can be kind of our guardian of the issue.
And Mandy, who's our HR, who does this for a living, I think will be invaluable to that.
Okay, super. So, are we all in agreement to provide a Monday? Ms. Roberts? And to the audience out here, these are critical decisions right here. So, please be patient with us as we discuss these things, because there's about five positions in the city that makes it or breaks it. And this is one of them. So, we've got to get this right, and it's worth the time we're spending. Okay, we go to number eight. Request for proposal on the architectural services. Give you a quick summary. Everybody knows this. We purchased the church, closed in November. The purpose of purchasing the church was to convert the church into a new police station and hopefully to design within it some sort of community center, so it'll be a dual, multi-purpose building. The council did, in a recent council meeting, was, by unanimous vote, I believe, was to ask that we bid out architectural services to try to start the process of figuring out exactly what the retrofit would cost. And from what I understand, we have two outfits that have shown interest. Is that correct?
Correct, Mayor White was not unanimous.
Okay, it's four to one. Excuse me. Stand corrected. Yes, you're right. It's four to one. So, Mandy?
Yes, we received two responses. One from Partain Architecture, the other from David King Jr. and Associates. Jan, myself, Troy, and Chief met on March 30th to review the proposals. And they were ranked on certain criteria that was provided for in the RFP. And according to our ranking, the order of preference that we chose was number one, Partain Architecture, and number two, David King.
So, what is the next step? They're going to give us their bids?
Well, this is a request for proposal. So, at this point, once you choose the architect that you want us to move forward with, then we begin to negotiate with them a price service.
Okay, out of the two that we have to choose from, I have no experience on what architectural firm to hire. How would we know which one to choose?
Well, we base them on our decision, our recommendation, on the specific criteria that was provided for in the RFP.
Okay.
And there were different things considered. I can actually pull that up, too, for you to look at that. But between the four of us, we went through, determined whether or not that the middle was complete, if they had provided all of the information that we had asked for. Went through each qualification, and there was a point system associated with that. One was the firm's qualifications. Where are they, are they local? How many municipal jobs have they done? And the bids are in front of you, or the RFPs are in front of you. If you want to take a moment to look through what they submitted. But the review committee is recommending Partain Architecture. And if you go with that recommendation, then we'll begin negotiations with them. And if we can't negotiate a price that you determine, to be fair, you can reject it, negotiate with King, or you can reject that, and we start over.
Okay. So, what we're going to talk about now is putting this on the agenda for Monday to, for council to vote and to choose one of the two?
For the staff to begin to negotiate.
Okay. Comment by anybody here?
Well, what I would add is essentially, what would happen on Monday is the council would rank, or if you're looking at what the recommended ranking order is, and you just have two, so that's simple. There's one and two. And really, you'd either be reordering that number or accepting what staff has said, accepting that ranking. And then, per the CCNA, the Competitive Consultant Negotiation Act, this is the procedure the city is utilizing because of the nature of the project and the professional being hired, then you'd also include the direction to negotiate with that number-one firm that you select. And then, you would see the information coming back. So, Monday, it's really just a selection of the order of preference, and then instruction to staff to commence the negotiation. So, the motion would be twofold on Monday.
Very good. Jan, do you have any comments?
I'm just going through Partain's binder here. I mean, I see where they did a police department over in Ocala already. They did the fire department. I've seen some schools in here, so I kind of agree with their ranking. So, I'd be interested in us talking on Monday about them going forward. Maybe one of their project engineers want to fill in their hat over you.
Ms. Williams?
Go, Karen.
Any?
They'll probably go.
Okay, very good. So, Ms. Roberts, I guess that will be put on the agenda for Monday, correct? Very good.
Andrew, can this go on consent?
Pardon me?
Can this go on consent, this motion? Or would we rather want to keep it on the regular agenda?
It would be best, because it's through the CCNA procedure, to place it on the regular agenda, because you're going to want to have the opportunity for discussion at that point. So, that would definitely be best.
Okay, good job, council. All right. Go to number nine. Agreement number AGR 2021-0, voluntary cooperation, operation assistance agreement with Marion County Sheriff. You want to describe that, Ms. Roberts, with this?
It's the agreement that we do annually with the sheriff's office for interlocal cooperation between the Dunellen Police Department and the sheriff's office. It's pretty, a boilerplate agreement. It's pretty standard. We go through this every year. We just renew it every year with them. Nothing really any different in this agreement than what we have in place today. Unless Chief wants to speak to it any further, I don't... We're just renewing the agreement that we already have with them.
Any comment, council? Can we put this on the consent agenda?
Yeah.
Okay. Can we put it on the consent agenda? This is just a continuation of an agreement that's been in place for a long time, working with the sheriff. Okay, good? Excellent. Number 10. Agreement number AGR 2020-08, preparation of design and construction plans for Cedar and Ohio Street, roadway project IPO number 95, Kimberly Horn. This is an extension of the presentation that Troy gave recently. It's the city's first major effort to start repaving some of the roads within the city. Anybody want to make a comment? Mandy, Troy, do you need to make a comment before we say anything?
Just to reiterate exactly what you said, this proposal from Kimberly Horn is for the design and engineering of the Cedar Street and Ohio Street repaving project that we were talking about. Pardon me? The entire length of Ohio and the city portion of Cedar Street, which is from Pennsylvania to River Drive, right in front of the art gallery.
Comments, council? Comments?
We do. We have Alan from Kimberly Horn here with us. And also, I just want to remind council that this design will also be looking into or adding into the concepts for on-street parking availability in those areas. So, as the designs come back to us, we can change the designs to fit our budget or our needs at that point. But this proposal includes looking into the probability of additional on-street parking in those areas.
Would you like to speak to us for any reason? We don't pipe. Name an address, please, for all you might need to...
Alan Gary. There we go.
Troy knocked it out.
101 East Silver Springs Boulevard, Ocala, Florida. Nothing in particular. These roads, we walked them with Troy and with John Worrell from FGUA. Just evaluated everything. We have a good understanding of what needs to be done. And it'll be a good continuation of the previous paving that went on downtown. A good next step.
I'm with the completion date of your...
My services?
Yes, sir.
We have our design services that I would expect to be about four months. And then, we also have construction phase services in there that, construction for that particular project would run, I would estimate, nine months to a year, I think.
The question, Troy, I'm sure people will ask once the word gets out on this. It's somewhere within a year, the project may be started?
Somewhere within a year, the project could be completed. If design takes up to three to four months, four months, then, once council approves the design concepts, we can have the bid packs together and go out to bid within two months of that, a month or two months of that acceptance. And it usually takes about 30 days, 30 to 60 days, to process the bids when they come in. So, but the actual work itself, just like our parking lot projects, is, I would say, about three to four months, 90 days, a little more, to do it, because it is not a new project, like creating a parking lot from scratch. And it has very little detail to it. It's more of doing a road reclamation, where they'll grind up the old road, put down a new road on top of the bases that are there. The only new components would be any additional on-street parking that we are able to work into the project. Very little, if any, stormwater components, other than utilizing the drainage avenues that we have already in those areas. And the only other thing that could slow it down is if FGUA had any potential water or sewer line interference during that project. But they are on board with our timeframe and willing to stay on task with us.
I think the one thing council would not appreciate would be putting in a brand-new paved road and then finding out six months later that Fugle needs to put a pipe across the road, right?
That's why we have... We want to work with them during design and then...
We actually had John Worrell on-site with us when we did the walkthrough to get together, to get this packet together. We do have two manholes in each location, one in each location, that were questionable. And John Worrell said he looked into them. They are in good shape. We can work around them.
Anything else, council?
Go on our consent agenda?
Yes. Thank you very much, sir. Appreciate it. Going to number 11. Agreement number AGR 2021-09, on-call grant service, IPO number 96, Kimberly Horn. The way I understand this, it's an attempt by the city to really pick up the pace on our ability and our desire to find and get grants, making some sort of agreement with Kimberly Horn that they would be on the non-stop prowl, looking for various grants that could help the city. Is there anybody on staff that can speak to this and give us a little bit more information?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, I can present this. This is a piggyback agreement. Kimberly Horn has the same arrangement with the city of Hollywood and the city of Zephyr Hills, which are both small cities, like Dunellen. They actively search for grants. And basically, as you had stated, it's on-call. This agreement caps their fee at $30,000, which doesn't mean they would spend necessarily $30,000 on one grant application. It just depends on the grant and how much work is involved. For example, a DEO-TAC grant, like we currently have for the historic district that Ken Metcalf is working on, their fee would be $2,500 for a technical assistance grant. For a FEMA hazard mitigation grant, and FEMA grants take a lot of work. I know because I have been intimately involved in applying for them, their fee would be most likely around $15,000. So, this is just, they would approach us and say, here, you have a grant opportunity. Do you want to go for it? Now, the city has a policy in place that if a grant is going to cost the city for more than $25,000, it comes before council prior to application. And we give all the details to council. Is there a city match? What's involved? Staff time? There's a whole checklist that we go through. Anything less than 25, we normally take the liberty and go and apply for it. We know what's involved. If there's a match, we know it must be budgeted. Anything unknown, we would present to council. So, this is just so that we have basically a grant writer on board, where staff isn't able to apply for the grant ourselves. So, we would be working in conjunction with Kimberly Horn to acquire grants. We wouldn't just leave it in their lap. We would continue on our own searching for grants. So, we wouldn't just rely on them. I look for grants. Troy looks for grants. The police department is always getting grants from FDLE. So, that's where we wouldn't be incurring costs.
From a business standpoint, the motivation to them, to finding grants, is that's how they earn a fee.
Oh, absolutely.
So, it's a win-win if they happen to find a half-million-dollar grant for us, and they say, "This is our fee for finding you a half-million dollars." It sounds to me like it's a pretty good, pretty good business.
It is. And we can always, what, one thing I would do is ask upfront, well, what is your fee going to be? And if it's going to be $30,000, we would most likely bring it before council and say, here's our opportunity to get a $2-million grant for whatever project, but it's going to cost the city $30,000. And if you, you know, want us to, them to move forward, then we would move forward, trying to give the award.
I think the question maybe that's on the tip of everybody's tongue is what would happen if we asked them to apply for a grant, and they put in the time and work, and the grant was not successful? Would we still be billed for a grant that didn't happen?
Absolutely. It's a cost of doing business.
So, that's why when we get to a certain number, council needs to know about it.
Yes, you do.
Okay.
And what I might ask is, you know, what amount would you want to be notified of? You know, how much it would cost the city? Our charter allows, I believe, Mandy, to authorize, to obligate the city up to $5,000. Would that be the same, or could we go higher based on what the grant is? Now, I believe that Allison would not bring anything forward to us, that she wouldn't feel we have a very good chance. It doesn't mean we would gain the award. But she would not just apply to apply.
I think council would be very comfortable knowing there's a certain figure. Once it gets to that point, council needs to know about it.
And what figure would you be comfortable with?
That would be something for council to... Did you want to speak to them?
I can probably maybe assuage your concerns a little bit. The way our process is with the grant applications, it is very hands-on. And well ahead of us making application, we are coordinating with the grant... We are coordinating with the grant issuing agency, talking to the, the grant program managers, evaluating the project, getting their feedback on it. So before we ever make application, we have a pretty good sense of whether it's going to be successful or not. It's not 100%, but because of that level of communication that we have, and we're, you know, we're back and forth, and we're constantly updating the city on that, it gives us a much better chance, as if we were to just fill out the application, follow the rules, and not talk to anybody. So that, I think that process allows for us to pull back and say, this, this one's not going to go before we even make application. And we may start the process, but if we get the sense that it's not going to work, we'll let you know.
Do we have a number right now that council has to approve?
It would be up to a maximum of $30,000.
No, but right now, is, is there, right now, it's 30?
As far as what the IPO is for...
I think council would want a number...
Well, it would be, $25,000 is our standard policy to definitely bring before council. So, but, and Mandy has, has authorization. If Allison comes before us and says, here's a grant, I would charge $5,000 to make application. Mandy would have authority to say, to go forward with it. Anything above that, if you want, we can bring it before council. Or we can go a little higher. It, it's all up to your discretion.
I wanted to ask him, sorry. So I just want to make sure I understand what you were saying. So if y'all determine before you make the official application that, hey, this just isn't going to work for the city, then I'll, then we don't get charged anything. Is that correct?
No, you would still get charged for our time up to that point.
Oh, but not, so if it would have been, if you made the application, it'd have been $10,000, but if you only did four hours of work, it'd only been $4,000?
Yeah, it could have been a quarter of that amount.
Okay. So that...
There's a savings there, because we don't go all the way through to application. Then there's reviews, and they, sometimes they come back with questions.
Sure.
All of that effort is saved if we get the sense from the grant issuing agency that this is not the year for this project, maybe next year.
Okay. So let me ask you just one more quick question to that follow-up, is that, what would you determine, and I know I'm kind of putting you on the end, but what would you assume is like a, a average for that, you know, if it's up to $30,000, what would you think would be the average?
For our effort?
Yes, sir.
Our effort averages anywhere from five for some of the more simpler, well, even down to the $2,500, but on average, we're five to $15,000 for an effort. The ones that are a lot more in-depth get up to that $20,000, but that's, there's not very many of them require that level of effort.
And let me just, real quick, so if you come to them with a grant, and it's going to cost $10,000, let's say, how fast of a turnaround do you usually need from them to know that, yes, go forward? I'm just trying to see what number I think we should, you know, I'm, I'm comfortable with the $5,000, but if it's usually like a, hey, we need it within a two-week answer, then maybe we need to bump it to $10,000. See how, I'm trying to figure out where that...
Where that, so the application windows are very long.
Okay.
So you would have time. In that scenario, we would come to you and say, we think we have a grant that will work out for you. Most of the time, the application windows are on the order of months,
Okay.
where we would have anywhere from three months to six months to get an application in. We would be able to say, this, we think this grant works out for you for this project. Here's what we think it's going to cost us to put the application together. Then you can take the time you need, come back to us and say...
I said, you know, sometimes I know we've done grants, it's like, got to get this puppy in fast.
Right.
So, and I guess we can always call special meetings if that's, but I think I'm comfortable with the $5,000.
If it's a special project, you know, that council, let's just say, road, road paving.
Yeah.
We, we could, you know, we'd be on the phone asking for a special council meeting. Again, if a grant is going to be $25,000 or more, it has to come before you, anyway. So that is, that is our res, our policy by resolution.
All right, is that...
Yes.
Any comment?
Sounds like plan B.
Yes?
I think grants are out there this year.
This gives us the flexibility to go after multiple forms. Right now, we currently have a couple of grant-seeking contracts with you all, but they're individual, and they're targeted specific to certain grants. This gives us the ability to utilize, we have a developed library of different grants, and we can kind of come through that and see what best fits with what the city's needs are.
And does everybody on council feel comfortable, at least for now, keeping it at the $5,000 level?
Okay.
And then if it's above?
Well, but it's $25,000 right now.
Well, no, 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 that's, that's as far as the grant application itself. So if Kimmerly Horn brings forward, hey, here's a grant, $25,000 to do something, we have to come to you.
Oh, right.
But if they're looking for a grant less than that, but it's going to cost $5,000 or more, what I'm hearing is we come and basically ask permission first.
That's the way it is right now, correct?
Yes.
All right.
To go forward, to go forward, to, to let Kimmerly Horn go ahead and do their research on the grant, and see if, you know, they can move forward with an application that would cost us $5,000 or more.
I think we can work with that within the timeframes you're saying, and we also have the ability to call a special meeting if something is...
Or urgent.
Really urgent.
Yeah.
I, I like that. Let's see, populists know that $5,000 means a lot to the city, you know, we're, we're watching, watching our pennies and nickels, which we need to do. So we put this on the consent agenda?
Yeah.
Ms. Kenny? Pretty good. All right. Number 12, this looks like this is just how we do business. To add, the mayor is the third signator on all city bank accounts to facilitate transactions of city funds in the absence of the city clerk or financial officer. It's my understanding this has been in practice for a while. Okay, so this is...
So Mayor Burns was on the checking account?
No, I'd like to speak to this. No, we, because council turned over, you know, every so many years, and we have a lot of bank accounts, it was decided many years ago to have the city administrator, the treasurer, and me on the bank accounts, because the city administrator was authorized to disburse funds, and of course, the city treasurer by charter. Due to the elimination of that position, we're down a signator on our bank accounts. Prior to that change, the mayor was always on the bank accounts, so we're just going back to that, because in case of an emergency, we very rarely write a manual check, but we still do. We, we need to have somebody else we can call upon that can sign that check. Now, all our checks take two signatures. So if two of us are absent, we can't write the check.
And, and it's more of a, and I remember back in the day, twenty years ago, Sydney sat on my lap as an infant, I had to come in here and sign checks, and they, I was signing so many of, my faces on the employee's checks. But I was signing so many of them, my handwriting looked bad, and they actually looked at my check, already checked, to make sure it was real, like me.
Right. So... And we electronically sign checks now. We have moved a little forward, technologically speaking. But like I said, occasionally, we still need to write a manual check.
Since this would involve me, Andrew, what are the legal liabilities for an individual to agree to put their name as a signator on these checks?
Legal liability is insofar as if there's some sort of an issue, or if there's some measure of fraud or so forth.
Correct.
You know, that would all boil down to acting in good faith and so forth, so there could be some individual liability, but no more than, you know, that city employees and so forth incur by signing checks.
It's more to likely in, in real terms, if I'm called in to sign a check, it's because whoever normally signs them is not here. So normally, it'd be, Mayor, while you're in the office, will you sign this? Yeah, what is it? Oh, okay.
What you would want to...
I'd be signing, I'd be signing a check that I probably really didn't have a lot of time to know really for sure what I was signing and why.
Well, Mayor, I would provide you, if it was me asking you to sign it, you would have all the information. You, you would need to know why you were signing the check.
Right.
For example, we go to the tag office for new vehicles. We don't know how much that's going to be prior to going to the tag office. So we use a manual check, and we sign it, we make it out to the tax collector, and then we're given a copy back after that check is given to the tax collector. So we don't just blindly sign checks. We would never, I would never ask you, you know, here, take my word for it, sign this check.
Well, you kind of, I, I understand what you mean.
But I understand...
You understand what I'm saying.
I absolutely understand your concern.
Because there, there have been people in the past that have signed things that didn't really understand what they were signing.
Right.
And they got in a lot of trouble.
I would make sure, I personally would make sure you do have a comfort level for what you're signing.
All right, well, council, if there's no comment on this, you want to put it on the consent agenda? Okay. Okay, we go to item number 13. Council Code of Conduct, Mayor White, this, this will be very short. Going through our codes and whatever, we have strong language in our codes that pretty much describes how we are supposed to respond and react and treat people in the audience and people that speak. Lot of wordage of respect. Don't say things that are insulting, various things like that. You look at our language, it's not as quite strong as what those that are at the podium can say toward us. And what I have experienced personally, and what I have witnessed to other people on council and staff, is sometimes people coming up to the podium, their only purpose of coming to the podium is to insult, defame, humiliate, or somewhat try to intimidate someone by publicly shaming them. And there, there's no reason for anybody on council or staff to have to sit here and be publicly shamed, because there's no reason behind it other than they want to make you look bad. So I've asked Andrew to take a look at what our existing language is and possibly beef it up a little bit. That gives us a little bit more definition of what's allowable and what's not. So Andrew, take it, take it from here.
Sure, I'd be happy to, to go over some of the language, or, or just make some comments on it. Anytime that you have a forum, anytime that, of course, that, that there's a council meeting, there are certain restrictions on what type of speech can be limited by Florida law and the US Constitution. That being said, there's a Florida statute that allows certain rules for local government to act protections of speech, and those go mainly to speaking order and so forth. In addition, courts in Florida have also held that the First Amendment doesn't prevent local governments from enforcing decorum rules, and the Code of Conduct currently has decorum rules regarding obscene, vulgar, or abusive remarks. What I have done is taken a look at case law and what decorum rules have been upheld. And the Ninth, the Ninth Circuit upheld a decorum rule that reads very much like the proposed updated language. And what you'll find in reading the proposed updated language, this sheet, if everybody's looking at the same, there's the first passage that's taken from the City Council Code and Dot Code of Conduct that includes the existing language as it is today. The proposed updated language includes some of that language, but expands upon it to include some other categories of, to call out some other, some other categories of, of speech, as well as to touch on physical violence, which the current City Council Code of Conduct, although it may be implied, does not specifically, since that's become an issue at some council meetings across the country. Upon having a discussion with Mayor White, I included that as well.
Pretty good. So, council, if you look at it, you'll see what the existing language currently is, and you can see what the proposed language is. What this is, is just simply any of us, although it doesn't say staff, the chair should protect staff, that if someone's coming up to this podium and their only purpose isn't constructive criticism, the purpose is to belittle, embarrass, defame, make you, for no other reason, just look bad, and then do that under the guise of freedom of speech. That's not freedom of speech. No governmental entity, if you went to Tallahassee and spoke at one of the committee meetings, and you were up there talking in front of Senator Bradley's committee, and you pointed, you picked out one of the committee members and start talking about them personally, or their family, or calling them a drunkard, or whatever, you'd be escorted out immediately by the sergeant of arms. So all this is, is putting in language that becomes a point where council, we're basically elected officials that are doing this for free. So there, there is no reason to subject anybody to purposeful abuse. So that's what the purpose of this language is.
And I would point out, the proposed updated language does specifically pile out language directed at city council staff as well as the general public, so it's inclusive of everyone.
I think that's good. Is that something you'd add to this?
It's, it's in there in the, it's within the first sentence.
Okay, very good.
On the third line of the proposed updated language, any member of the city council staff or general public.
I, I think that's good. It also protects staff, because once in a while, staff can get roughed up in a way that's beyond constructive criticism. Any comments on this? Dan?
Want to put it on the consent agenda?
This will have to go in the form of a resolution.
Okay, resolution.
Question, though. Would it be helpful, when we do have a resolution order and such and so forth, that maybe we could laminate it or something and put it on the podium where people sign it? But it's, that, I mean, because if you don't, I mean, everybody should know how to have good manners, but if they forget, at least we have posted it, and it's for the public, or even put it on the table, our old table out there, one of those little plastic things, and that way, again, we're just, hey, this is how we, we want to treat you right, we want to be treated right. Well, no, but if we kick them out, and they say, well, we didn't know, we can say, oh, no, 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 no. Right? More indications better.
And in fact, even on the sign-up sheet, we call attention to it, and call attention to the meeting we're on the agenda, that there is a, our decorum rules, and if you're going to speak, please be familiar with them.
I would love that. I think that would be amazing.
Good. Okay, we're going to put that, Ms. Roberts, we're going to put that on the agenda for Monday?
I can do that, Ms. Roberts.
Very good. Okay, now we're going to item number 14, priorities and goals. Presentation by Councilman Kenny.
Yes, I would like to have you remove that, please. Not that I don't want to hear, but thank you.
Okay, very good. Number 15, council comments. Dan, you want to start us off with some council comments?
Yes. I believe that the physical environment of our Dunellen City employees is of utmost importance for many reasons. I don't think I have to explain them. We've all been employees, most of us have been business managers and all kinds of respects of businesses. Our police chief, Mike McQuaid, went to a local television station and explained that there was an emergency situation with our police station. And I would love to have Chief McQuaid write a report for council addressing emergency situations that relate to the structure of that building, the air conditioning ducts, the plumbing, the electrical problems that obviously exist, storage problems, our mice and rats getting into the storage places and eating the marijuana and having too much fun. I think there are problems that need perhaps immediate attention. And I know we have one of the best city works department for a small city, headed by Troy, of course, that address immediate problems, as we call on... of course, that address immediate problems as we call on him to do so. But I think council should know what problems really exist and should we started making corrections, physical changes, make it a safer, better environment for our employees, starting like immediately. Because if we're looking at building a police station down the road, it's going to be a while. What can be done now? Do we need to go into our city budget and spend 20, 30, $40,000 and correct problems? That building is part of our city. If we go to a new police station, what's going to happen to that building? If it gets put up for sale and it's a total wreck, well, it's going to be of little value to the city. Should it be either used as another part of our city infrastructure or should it be sold? So I would like to ask Chief McQuague to please present something to the city to address those problems and what would you like to see corrected immediately for the welfare of your employees in your physical environment?
And did you get that email?
I got an email from Will Fontaine, well, actually, it was addressed to Mayor White. Want me to read it? The reports, reported statement below, and this we're referring to the report of the field, is what we sent to the FDEP and state warning point as required. Operations personnel responded to a notification as noted and found an electrical component that had failed. Resetting this breaker allowed the station to be pumped down immediately and stop any adverse conditions. At that time, staff installed a new main breaker to remedy any further failure. The area was disinfected with lime and samples were taken at the site, both upstream and downstream of the discharge as required. It has been authorized to install a mission communications internet-based system for continuous monitoring of the pump station. Although the station is a low-flow station, I have approved a mission SCADA unit to improve our monitoring and response time and hopefully alleviate further spills in the future. We will keep you apprised of any due conditions that may impact the citizens in the future. I would suggest we get on a call soon to discuss the city's expectations regarding notifications moving forward.
And I just asked, I didn't know they wrote Q and A, I don't mean to say, but when I spoke with Mr. Worrell this morning, yeah, this morning, I just asked him about it because I'd had a citizen or two ask me about it. And he had even recommended, he had told me about that new system that has been approved. And what that means is citizens don't have to call and say, hey, it's going off. Now the mechanism will automatically alert, it just doesn't go through the call center, goes to somebody directly, is what he said. And then also, he mentioned that from now on, there's a better communication of when there is an issue, that he's putting city clerk and public works on their email for immediate notification that there's something, that might be 2:00 in the morning, and of course, we don't expect them to be responding. And if it's super serious, of course, and they would get phone calls and I'm sure then they would call us. But anyway, I just, it was just something, some extra communication that'll be, you know, FGUA trying to be a good partner with us. And so, that's all.
I'd like to make a comment on that. That really is a serious situation. If y'all don't believe that, check out what happened to the city of Valdosta, Georgia, when one of their contract employees did some bad work at a pump station and it depends on electrical contact to keep those pump stations working. The pump station failed and it resulted in a spill of 7 million gallons of raw sewage at the city of Valdosta's water treatment plant into a local stream and that local stream then fed that sewage, all 7 million gallons into the Floraids with the Koochie River, that with the Koochie River that's up there in Madison County. So those electrical failures are really serious business. So it's important that we keep us posted on what they're doing to keep those systems updated.
And that new thing is on a battery operated, so it doesn't have to go through like alarm tray?
Ms. Williams?
I really don't have much to say. I just want to say as far as the concerns, citizens of Chet Meyer, there have been some people working behind the scenes coordinating with whoever for the vaccinations for COVID-19. And I think they've done a wonderful job and they are still coordinating, trying to get people to get vaccinations.
All right, I just have a couple. I'd just like to back up a little bit what Vice Mayor said and Ms. Cabbage, anytime you have wastewater, sewage, chemicals, whatever, that's somewhere around rivers, tributaries, you have issues. Right here, this pump station that we're talking about is on a lot that's not more than 100 feet from the Wet Koochie River. So that was a spill right there, it was a minor one, but if it was a major one, that was going right into the Wet Koochie River. I know exactly where that left the station is. And Quistinelli, if you've been reading the newspaper, what's happening up in Manatee County, there's 480 million gallons of phosphate residue from 20 years ago that's been sitting in a pond with dikes. People, I guess, just forgot about it. And now the dikes are breaking and that water, that nitrated water with all the pollutants that are going in it are going right into Tampa Bay. Could be, if they don't get that under control, it could be an ecological nightmare of monstrous proportions. And this has always been one of my concerns that I've been talking about over the last couple of years of piping. All the sewage, all the human waste, and we know what that is, coming right into our plant in Dunellen, right in between the Wet Koochie River and right in between the Rainbow River. There is no one in this room, no matter how ecologically sensitive they are, would they ever agree to building a wastewater plant in between these two pristine rivers? And it is there. And all this sewage now is scheduled to come our way. And it's something I've been telling the city about. This is a problem in the making. It will alleviate the nitrates and some of the issues with the Rainbow River, no question. And everybody, including me, I will raise both hands and say, I'm in favor of doing what we can to help the Rainbow River. But at the same time, the city is now, no longer owns that utility company. We no longer get a dime from revenue from it. And now thousands, thousands of peoples flushes are coming into the city and it's now going to be processed right in between those two rivers. By the way, Dunellen Heights is one of our most active places of building right now. We have between 10 and 14 houses that are being built as we have a wastewater treatment plant that is wildly expanding in one of the areas that is our biggest building thing. So big concern there. It's something, it might alleviate a problem, but the city, maybe not in my tenure, maybe somewhere down the line, the city's going to have to deal with the decision of pumping all the raw sewage into the city. I don't think people are fully aware of what's about ready to happen. The only thing I want to bring up as far as council comments goes, as y'all know that we did pass the ordinance, Mandy is now the city clerk with the city administrator position being eliminated. Mandy has assumed most of those duties that the city administrator had. Main thing she doesn't have is the, the police are answerable directly to the council. They're not under the authority of Mandy. But she's, she basically does everything else. She also does not have the final say on hiring and firing of department heads. So Mandy, in our negotiation, and it has also been discussed at an open council meeting, what her salary will be now that she has been hired, accepted, and we've created this new position through ordinance. And the number, and it's within, it's within the boundaries of what the city clerk makes. Mandy will now be paid 70,000 a year to do this, starting with her hire. We want to be very transparent and let everybody know that along with her expanded duties, she gets a commensurate pay raise. Keep in mind, the city has benefited financially tremendously over the last several months where Mandy has actually been doing two jobs and being paid at her old city clerk, three jobs. So the money we were paying for the extra people has been saved because Mandy's been actually doing that. So this is one of those deals where I think the city came out spades on this deal. So any comments on that, counsel? Mandy said.
I appreciate you, Mandy, very much.
Do you have her?
She's been a trooper.
I must say, all the other staff, too.
Chief definitely came in for one or two jobs.
Yes.
Teresa.
Yeah, God love her.
Teresa's had to do work that Mandy was doing. It's been a, it's been a, a lot of times in this room, there is a lot of back patting and stuff I've heard a lot, but Mandy.
Get her Xanax.
Mandy, Chief, and Teresa and everybody, Troy, they've all had to step up because for three, four, five months now, we've had to operate with a skeleton crew. And we haven't really missed a beat.
And it's good. It's good to have the knowledge, the skills and abilities to do all this stuff. And especially when you come from the bottom. I've been there. You learn a lot. That's wonderful.
I'd like to make a comment also.
Sure, go ahead.
I think, I think the camaraderie of the employees here is terrific. And I think that's what makes this city move on. You got to have it. I mean, the hours that you guys put in just being here during these extra long meetings and you're still smiling most of the time. Okay, we appreciate what you all do and are glad that we have you all on board because you're all pretty awesome.
Even if you do go home and just, oh.
We have a lot to kick tires.
We're going down, we're now at number 16, city clerk comments.
I would suggest that you make this formal by vote on Monday with an effective date, perhaps to coincide with the adoption of the ordinance, just to make it official. I would put it on the agenda. I'd like to do that, just to make it.
We have a consensus?
I, okay. Did I put it on consent or talk about it? You know what I'll talk about.
Anything else, Ms. Roberts? Mr. Hand, number 17, city attorney comments.
Yes, sir, just one. It's been a while since, well, a lot of things, it hasn't been a long time since our last meeting, but a lot of things have changed, of course, in the COVID front, and I think it's common knowledge now, certainly that anyone in Florida 16 years of age or above is eligible for COVID vaccine. So that's, that's all I wanted to point out, just for purposes of continuity from providing updates from the beginning till now.
Chief, do you happen to have anything you'd like to say? You're, you've been eerily quiet tonight.
His boss is speaking, that's fine.
I have a question for Attorney Hand. I just caught on the news just a couple of days ago that something's, that's transpiring in the Florida legislature. I can't remember the representative's name other than he's from Alachua County, and he's proposing that the state is going to allow individual business owners to declare their property, even though it's a, their residence, a place of business, and city councils will have no say in allowing that to happen. In other words, if someone has suddenly decided they're going to have a beauty shop because they've been cutting hair during COVID, the hair of all their friends and relatives, now they're going to have a business out of their home and the city would not, would have no say in allowing them to have a commercial business at their residence. Could you keep us posted on that, please?
Yes, I could. There's, you know, it's been a trend and we've discussed it, that there's, there's been a long time, sort of, whether or not it comes to fruition, but an attempt to diminish home rule powers of cities. And certainly, there's been several efforts to expand the ability of individuals to have home businesses. So I'm not familiar with this one in particular, but there have been several that have been brought up and haven't been passed to a certain extent, but certainly I'll take a look at it and anything that warrants providing an update, I'll be happy to keep you informed.
Thank you.
Very welcome. Very good. Okay, we're at the final one. Get your second chance, public comments. Is anyone in the audience, has anybody signed up?
I have Susan Jones and Bert Eno.
Okay, Bert, Dr. Eno, who can speak?
I'm Bert Eno. I live at 9220 Southwest 193rd Circle in Rainbow Springs. I didn't, I put my name on the list without any intention to actually speak, but something has come up that I think I would like to speak to. I appreciate the objections or the suggestions that were made by Louise concerning this matter of hiring a planning director. I have no idea what the credentials of the two candidates are that you've gotten so far. As a matter of fact, I would like to ask if I may have a copy of the resumes and the applications of those two candidates. The reason I ask is because all along, I'm the one who objected most profusely about the possibility of unqualified candidates being hired. And that has happened for that position already. And now you're trying to look for truly qualified candidate and you've specified the conditions, the education, the experience and so on, that's appropriate. And you've gotten that ad out substantially. I've seen it myself. And however, I think that what Louise was suggesting about personal contacts with people at the University of Florida and possibly other schools as well, that have programs in urban planning, is a good idea. Since you only got two applicants, and it sounds like, from what I'm gathering here, only one of them seems to stand out in any way to you on the council, I think it's wise to reopen this. There is no urgency about filling that position. It is much more important to fill it with the best qualified person you can get. It is probably the, one of the most important jobs in this city or any city. Furthermore, I wouldn't mind having some input to this, and I've suggested this to you, Mayor, that on occasions where you're trying to hire a professional individual, having a committee of some sort with people that are professional and have had a background related to the position that you're hiring for would be advantageous. Now, in my Now, in my case, I spent 35 years in academia, and I had several different administrative positions, including chairman of a large mechanical engineering department twice over. I hired a number of people, I dismissed some, uh, I got committees together to review candidates for positions before making decisions to hire them, and I think that I'm on a five-minute, rather than three minutes, because I signed up before the meeting.
Only three minutes, Mr. Hand.
So, so I, uh, I feel that you need to look for in, some input. Now, you can take mine or leave it, tell me to stick it someplace, but, uh, I'm willing to offer some input because I think that I'm one of those professional people that's qualified to react to the proposals for, uh, this particular job position. Uh, I challenge anybody on the, uh, on the, uh, council, as a matter of fact, to have this as greater credentials or as much credential to make a judgment of this kind of a position. It's very important. Look for every opportunity to find out as much as you can and be as satisfied as you possibly can. Have you checked any references? Have you called the references yet? I remember a situation here in the city where a, a manager was hired who really falsified her credentials. She was an administrator, as a matter of fact, without any managerial opportunities or, um, credentials or, uh, rights, and they brought her in here and gave her the job as manager of, uh, the city of Dunellen. And at the time this occurred, I was serving on a committee to review candidates for man, that manager position, and the mayor at that time, uh, said, oh, we don't need to check references. And I was very insistent that they check the references, and they didn't. And he waved me off and said, ah, baloney, that's not necessary. And what did they get? $20 million worth of debt. Remember Greenlight Communications? So I would say, be careful, this is an important position, do the best you can to do as much study in preparation for hiring somebody.
Thank you, Doctor. Uh, just one comment I would make, I, I would feel if I was applying for a job, and my resume that I submitted for a job was just handed out to the public, I would take great exception to that. I, I, I wouldn't appreciate that at all. So I, I, I would withdraw, if that was part of, if that was part of it, I would just withdraw my, my application.
It's gonna be public records.
It's public record.
Yeah, but to just purposely just hand it out, you know?
It's public record. You're applying for a civil position, it becomes public record.
Well, then, then whoever would like to have it, let them apply for it, and, and ask for it. I, I don't, I don't think, I don't think it's our, our lot to just, you know, i- if that is the process, then the process needs to be followed. Yes? Yes? Yes, okay.
Cindy McQuaid with the House of Representatives, is, the bill that you're talking about is House Bill 403, and it's on the floor.
I'm sorry, could you speak, speak up? I can't understand.
The bill that you're talking about, the home rule, it's House Bill 403.
Okay.
And if you just Google that, it'll come up, and it's on the floor now, um, to be voted on, it's most likely gonna pass. But, um, in the research, just to let you know, it doesn't overrule zoning and code enforcement, um, it simply just doesn't allow the local government to penalize somebody if they want to run a home office out of their home. So, so that you can be more informed, it is House Bill 403.
Thank you very much.
Any other comments? Okay.
I have a question, again.
Let's, okay, go ahead, Ash, come on up, and you ask your question. Go ahead, Jan, ask your question.
For Attorney Hand, um, is, is it a violation of the sunshine law if I was to go ahead and make inquiries of people that I know have associated with either of these candidates on my own, or do I need to wait till after, uh, the meeting on Monday, and we have the interview, and we get their formal resumes with references?
So, so you're asking me specifically, people who know this individual?
Right, could I make a phone call tomorrow to people I know who, uh, was on the, uh, Marion County Board of County Commissioners to ask about visa laws, for example?
Mm-hmm. If you're doing it for your own informational purposes, um, and it's, you know, remember the sunshine law, of course, usually requires some sort of interaction between two people on the same board, and obviously, the people you'd be calling are not members of the same board, so unless you are undertaking some sort of, you know, sort of, um, function where you're removing a candidate or something, and that doesn't make it the council, and that's clearly what's not happening, I don't see the possibility for sunshine violation.
Thank you.
For an HR issue?
Okay, Julianne, name, address, please.
Hey, Julianne Mendonza, 11894 East Glue Cove Drive. Um, just a couple of things, I felt like, first of all, a shout-out for citizen involvement. It was great to see some of our citizens come up and talk about things going on in the city and to be active. And I did see Kathy Dunn's interview on Channel 20 Gainesville, so I want to just give her a shout-out for getting opinions out there and sort of putting us, um, you know, just putting us out there. Um, I feel like it was a night of wish lists. I appreciated the Little League guy coming up with his wish list, and Jan's requesting a wish list for updates from the police, I think that's really positive. My wish list, um, would entail, uh, thinking about moving these meetings up a little earlier in the day. Um, I work full-time, it's gonna be 9:00 till we get out of here, and I would imagine with a four-day work week, that this also impedes on city staff's time, so then, you know, they're having to adjust within those other four days. So if there's any credence to making these, uh, meeting times a little earlier, I would vote for that. The last thing I have is a question about, it was number eight, the architectural services request, and at the bottom of that, on the agenda, it says $56,000 budgeted. Um, and just in the interest of pennies and nickels, which I think you mentioned earlier that we're watching those pennies and nickels, I'm just wondering what that $56,000 kind of correlates with, and that, that's primarily my question.
Dan, you want to take that one?
It was a, it's an estimate based on percent of construction costs. At the time, it was prepared, presented to council, um, March 4th of 2020.
So, I'm not a numbers person, so a percentage of the building cost?
Of construction costs.
Construction?
Mm-hmm.
$540,000. Oh, it's the percentage of the $540,000?
Yes.
And how much does it cost for the, how much is the cost of the architect coming to look at the church?
Well, that has to be negotiated. We have $56,000 in the budget, and it will be negotiated.
We're playing strong. Okay. I guess, I guess it's just a little like, woo, I was happy when I saw priorities at number 14, um, but unfortunately, we didn't talk about that tonight, but I just wonder, you know, we know that there's a lot of barriers associating with building costs and, and changes, and now we're asking for a wish list to try to address the issues, so the police thing is something I'm still trying to understand and work through, so I'll continue to, to do my homework and, and try to understand how that all fits together.
The short answer on that, Julianne, is when council passed the, the whole concept, this number was part of that concept, the number of what it would, uh, what would be in the budget for the architectural design. So that is just carried over from a previous vote that this council itself did not make.
Okay. And that doesn't change despite the fact that we know that the numbers are gonna be probably very likely slated, right?
Could be, and, and that's what's in the budget, and based on what comes back to us when we put out the bids, we have the powers, council, to either accept or reject that. But really, council did at that time allocate $56,000 up to, up to $56,000 for this.
So I'll keep trying to do my homework and, and, uh, continue to try to understand.
Everybody keep in mind that this present council is responding and working within what a previous council passed.
Three of us.
Yes, ma'am.
I would just like to remind the Zoom participants to raise their hand if they want to make public comment before the end of the meeting.
Any other, okay. Any other public comments?
They go home.
Need a motion to adjourn?
So goodbye.
Second?
So goodbye.
Okay, thank you.